Unless the chair notes otherwise. Members of the public who wish to view the live stream of the meeting may do so by going to North Row Remote Meetings on YouTube via the link on the agenda. Ensuring public access does not ensure public participation unless public participation is required by law. This meeting will feature public comment. I will go around the virtual room and make sure everyone can hear and be heard in just in the order on my screen. Laura Ziden.
Here.
We have Kristen Wickstead.
Here.
Lisa Missali.
Here.
Julianne Hirsch.
Here.
Also with us tonight is interim town administrator Bob Reed.
Here.
Assistant Town Administrator Becca Meekins. We all also with us Finance Director Jason Little.
Present.
Police Chief Bill Liver.
Present.
And we also have North Row Cable with us tonight, providing the recording and broadcast capabilities. Before we begin, I will note that the tradition for the town of North Row is that the town clerk oversee the beginning of the first meeting after an election for reorganization. Andy is on a much needed and well deserved vacation. So Town Administrator Bob Reed asked me to sort of fill in as the chair as the prior year's chair. For that process, in case anyone's wondering why we're doing things perhaps a little differently. And at this time, I will open it up for public comment as we always do at the beginning of the meeting. So if anyone has any comments or input for us for things that are not on our agenda, please raise your virtual hand and I will recognize you. See a lot of people in our audience tonight, probably for one or two important agenda items. I don't see any hands going up. Going once. Going twice. All right, we will move on to our agenda. First item regarding on our agenda is approval of meeting minutes for the May eighth, twenty twenty three meeting.
Mister Chairman, I move the board vote to approve the May eighth, twenty twenty three meeting minutes with the following correction on page two. Change the date of March twenty second to May twenty second, twenty twenty three.
Second.
Okay, good catch Julianne on that. Any other discussion? Motion's been made and seconded? All right, all those in favor, Julianne?
Aye.
Kristen?
Aye.
Now for our two incoming members, first of all, welcome. Second of all, the process that I've always followed with meetings that somebody has missed is if. You were, if you watched the meeting, if you watched the recording of a meeting and can attest that the meeting minutes are accurate, you can vote. In favor or know if you don't want, and you can also abstain if you so desire. Laura?
I'm going to abstain, but thank you.
Sure, Lisa?
I did watch and I will agree that they're fine.
Very good. All right, so I also vote aye. Vote is unanimous with one abstention. Meeting minutes are approved with that one correction. Thank you very much. Next up, we have election of officers. Is there a nomination for chair?
Mister Chairman. I move the board vote to nominate Mitch Cohen as chairperson.
Second.
Thank you very much. Are there any other nominations? Okay, all those in favor. Laura?
Aye.
Lisa?
Aye.
Kristen?
Aye.
Julianne?
Aye.
I also vote aye. Votes unanimous in favor. I am humbled to be elected chair with such a group of fantastic people. So thank you very much. Is there a nomination for vice chair?
Mister Chairman, I move the board vote to nominate Kristen Wickstead as vice chair.
There a second?
Second.
Okay, motion's been made by Julianne, seconded by Lisa for Kristen to become vice chair. Any other nominations? All those in favor, Kristen?
Aye.
Lisa?
Aye.
Julianne?
Aye.
Laura?
Aye.
I also vote aye. Vote is unanimous in favor. Kristen, congratulations and thank you very much. I look forward to working with you as vice chair in the coming year. Lastly, is there a nomination for clerk? Or someone willing to be clerk?
I nominate Laura to be clerk.
Second.
Oh. Thank you.
Are you, Laura, are you willing to be clerk? Doesn't involve too much work. Thanks to the hard work of Anne Whackel in her office.
Yeah, I can attest to that. I did it last year.
Good. All right, motion's been made and seconded. All those in favor, Laura?
Aye.
Lisa?
Aye.
Julianne?
Aye.
Kristen?
Aye.
I also vote aye. Vote is unanimous in favor. Congratulations and thank you very much, Laura. That ends the election of officers part of the agenda. Next up, we have a public hearing. To consider transfer of wine and malt package store license from Padma Padmavati, and I apologize for getting that so hard. To Helen's Variety Corp, DBA Helen's Variety for premises located at two ninety-two Main Street. I know we've got a couple of people to be brought in. Oh, and I don't know if you have those names. If not, I can get them from. The email I got from Diane earlier. The attendees, I see. Yep, Matthew Porter, I'm bringing you in. And I. Don't see the other name that was mentioned. Matthew, if you could, there we go and unmute. Fantastic. Can you hear us all right?
I can. Good evening.
Okay, thank you. Is there anyone else that you're expecting to be part of?
Yes, my client Prakash Patel should be on, but if you'd like, it's fairly straightforward. I'd be happy to give a summary to the board and see if that suffices.
That's fine. I don't see anyone with that name. If you are that person, feel free to raise your hand.
I brought them in.
Okay, oh, great. No, thank you. I mean, I will open the public hearing. For this item also. Okay, if you could turn on your video and unmute yourself. Welcome. Very good. You are muted. You don't need to unmute, but if you would like to speak, feel free to unmute yourself. All right, go ahead. Go ahead. Tell us. About what you're proposing here. Oh, you are.
Sure. Thank you, Mister Chair. Thank you, Board. My name is Matthew Porter. I'm the attorney for Helen's Variety Corp. Before the board, this is the transfer of the beer and wine license, which is currently in use at Helen's Variety, two ninety-two Main Street in Northborough. What is proposed is a transfer of that wine and malt license related to the sale of the business to Helen's Variety Corp. Helen's Variety Corp is made up of one individual, which is Prakash Kumar Patel. Mr. Patel's on the call with us today. He would also be the proposed license manager, meaning he'd be on site anywhere between forty to fifty hours per week. Mister Patel.
Excuse me, Mitch?
Yes.
I don't know if you, if it's policy to read the notice, but you just might want to open the hearing.
I did mention that I was opening the public hearing. Is there something more I should read?
I did. Oh, sorry, I missed that part. Sorry.
Yep, sorry. Thank you for confirming.
Yep, so Prakash Kumar is the sole principal of the corporation. He'd also be the proposed license manager, meaning he'd be on site, the one responsible for. The obligations responsible has come along with the liquor license. Mister Patel's an experienced operator. He's operated a beer and wine store in an all alcohol location. They've had no issues whatsoever at either one of those locations. He's alcohol tip certified. They'll have a full scanning machine in place there. So he certainly understands. The responsibilities that come along with the sale of beer and wine. There are no major anticipated changes to the business, so no changes to the structure, no changes to the hours whatsoever. So really just a transfer of the beer and wine license related to the sale of the business. And with that, I can certainly answer any questions that the board may have, and Mister Patel can as well.
Mister Patel, do you have anything that you wanted to add before we open up to questions from the board?
You're muted, but it looked like it was a no.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, thank you very much. Questions from the board? Lisa?
I, um, I just wanted to ask the question that are, is this license, I see that's going to be a lease up for ten years. Does the license go with the business in North Pro? Or does it go with the individual that's taking the license? Like if he decided to close the business there, could he use the business, could he lose the license somewhere else in North Pro?
Someone from town staff that might be able to answer that? Believe it goes with the premises.
So it stays?
Yeah, you're licensing a premises.
All right.
Somebody else, too. Sorry, go ahead.
If I may add to, if they were to try to move the license, it would have to come before the board to approve whatever location they were trying to move it to.
Okay, but it has to stay in North Pro anyway.
Oh, yeah, one hundred percent. Yeah, they're all relegated to each municipality or town.
Yeah, and if the business closed and someone else opened that location, they would also need to come back to us for the license. We did that recently with when paired port and plated changed into gather provisions. It was a similar situation. Any other questions from the board? Okay, this is a public hearing. If any member of the audience wishes to ask a question or provide some input on this item, raise your virtual hands and I will recognize you. Okay, seeing none, assuming there are no further questions, I'll entertain a motion to close the public hearing first, and then we will dispense with the license.
Mister Chairman, so moved.
Is there a second?
Second, sorry.
Okay, motion made by Julianne, seconded by Kristen to close the public hearing. Any other discussion? All those in favor, Julianne?
Aye.
Kristen?
Aye.
Laura?
Aye.
Lisa?
Aye.
I also vote aye. Vote is unanimous in favor. Public hearing is closed. Is there a motion on the request?
Mitch, I move the board to vote to approve the application to transfer the wine and malt. Package store from Padmavati Mohan Raju to Helen's Variety Corp, doing business as Helen's Variety. For premises located at two ninety-two Main Street.
Second.
Okay, motion made by Lisa, seconded by Kristen. Any other discussion? Julianne?
Yes, Chief Libber.
I didn't ask the chief. I made that mistake. I apologize. I know in writing Lieutenant Griffin seemed to be okay with this. Any additional information to provide?
No, the background investigation didn't reveal any concerns whatsoever.
Great.
Thank you.
Thank you. Julianne, thank you very much for pointing that out. Was there anything else? Any board member? Okay. Of a motion, we have a second. All those in favor, Laura?
Aye.
Lisa? Kristen?
Aye.
Julianne?
Aye.
I also vote aye. Vote unanimous in favor. Congratulations and welcome to North Row. We wish you the best of luck.
Thank you so much.
Thank you very much.
All right, thank you.
Very good. All right, next up we have Wegmans coming in. I see a hand up. I just want to make sure that is that person. Yes, Tyler and Richard. So Tyler Hensler, I'm going to bring you in. And Richard Bosch. Okay, I see somebody else brought in. Rich, very good.
I can, can you all hear me?
Yes.
Oh, great.
Okay, welcome. Okay, so we have a, this is from Wegmans to consider a one day special liquor license for multiple dates as follows, June twenty-five. July seventeen, August seventeen, and September twenty-first from five P M to eight P M for premises located at nine one zero two Shops Way. Now, this is not a public hearing. Is that correct?
I don't see that on the agenda. I'm more asking either Bob or Rebecca or Bill.
I don't believe you need a public hearing for just a one day license.
That's what I thought. I just wanted to confirm that procedurally. Okay, thank you. Welcome. Tell us.
If you could identify yourself and tell us what you're looking to do here.
Sure. Good evening, everybody. My name is Tyler Hensler from Upton, Cornell, and Devlin in Boston. I'm the attorney for Wegmans. Who is applying for one day licenses and the dates mentioned by Mitch. From hours would be five P M to eight P M on each of those days. They plan to host a beer tasting with some live music and lawn games on the outdoor patio near the entrance of the store. With me today is manager Rich Boshia, who's the manager of record on the license. Just describing the area, the area will be blocked to the general public by rock walls and stanchions. I don't know if you're familiar with the space in front of the Wegmans, but. There are some rock columns that sort of create some wide walls. With spaces in the middle, stanchions are, you know, the ropes will go between those to make sure nobody can, you know, you can't. Assimilate in and out of that space. It kind of lends itself pretty perfectly to a space to be sequestered for this kind of one day event. There will be an ID check at the entrance of this area. With wristbands given out to those who are over twenty-one. Each person with a wristband will get eight tickets. I'm titing them to a two ounce pour beer for each ticket. This will be at no charge to the public again, just a beer tasting. There will be several local breweries involved, including Mighty Squirrel, Jack's Abbey Harpoon, and several others. There will be four Wegman staff dedicated to monitoring the area at all times during that three hour window on each of those days. Each of those is tip certified and you should have those tip certifications in the application that we submitted, but please let me know if you require anything else. They will check IDs, they'll monitor for overconsumption and ensure that no one will be able to leave the area with their pours, however small. Each of the suppliers will also have their own trained staff pouring these beer samples. And inside the area, there will be eight seats for patrons to sit at while they sample the beer. There will also be. Live for one live performer, maybe two at a time, and a cornhole setup. They expect twenty to thirty people at the most to attend, you know, during the three hour stretch, you know, in and out. So not super heavy traffic. And that's, if Rich would like to add anything, but that's generally the idea and we're happy to take any questions. Thank you for your time.
Thank you very much. Rich, I know you're the manager. If you wish to join our meeting, just turn on your camera and unmute yourself. If you'd like to stay quiet, that's your discretion. Okay, any questions from the board? Julianne?
Yeah, so this question would probably be for Rich. Has this kind of event been done at any other store?
Yes, we've done events like this in our Burlington store and. The Burlington store is definitely set up a little differently out front. I don't know if any of you folks have had the opportunity to visit that store. They've got a. A pretty nice area out front that they've set up with like seats and things like that. And they do a few different outdoor events there. They've been very successful. Most importantly, they've been very safe. They've gone on. Without any type of issue. So we wanted to, you know, take a shot at it here at North Row. We think it's something that would be very well received by our customers.
Yeah, it sounds like a lot of fun. Thank you.
Thank you.
Kristen?
Hi, yeah, it does sound like a lot of fun. I'm, I'm just thinking like. I think you might get more people than you expect. So I just hope you're ready for that because you are giving away free beer. Even though it's a small amount, like.
In front of a very busy grocery store.
North Row, like we, we don't, people don't do that here. So just, I think you're gonna have a lot of people.
Well, hopefully, I think the weather will determine a lot on that as well, you know. But we, you know, it's something, you know, this is very similar to, this is the first time we're trying to do this outdoors, pre-COVID. And I'm not sure, you know, if any of the folks on this call were on the board, I guess it'd be four years ago now, the last time, you know, we came in person. To get, you know, to talk about doing some of these events. We've done these before indoors. We've done them in our liquor shops. And we have had a good amount of people, you know, up to about fifty at those indoor events. And again, I'm very proud to say they've all gone on without issue and. You know, the most important thing and the thing that we take the most seriously is the safety of the community, our patrons, our customers and everybody. So. We will have our asset protection team there as well. We will be checking IDs the exact same way we check IDs when our customers come to purchase in our store, which means we will have our scanners. Outside as well to run those IDs through those. Those scanners are about as foolproof as it gets with catching fake IDs. And it will be one hundred percent identification, just like it is in our stores. We ID whether you're twenty-one or ninety-one. When you come through our store and that will be the exact same thing that we will be doing outside.
Yeah, and I'll add to what Rich said. There are only eight tables in this space, so it's not like we're gonna pack, you know, a hundred and twenty people into, you know, this area. It's. Eight seats, you know, if it's that capacity, it's that capacity. You just have to go inside and enjoy some of Wegman's other offerings. So we, you know, they will turn people away if it gets too crowded.
Okay.
Great. Chief Liver, did you have anything you wanted to opine on this?
Wegmans is an exceptional licensee. They do what they say and I have no concerns.
Excellent. Thank you very much. Any other comments, questions? Okay, I'll entertain a motion.
I move the board vote to approve the application for a one day special license as submitted by Wegmans for events to be held at nine one zero two Shops Way. Per the approved floor plan as submitted with the application. The event dates are June twenty-fifth, July seventeenth, August seventeenth, and September twenty-first. From five to eight P M with no rain dates. Do you want me to read all those bullet points?
I think they were on the proposed motions. I'll ask Bob to confirm.
Yeah, I'm reading from the email, so I think I am. Let's read them. I just was double checking.
Okay, my assumption is yes.
Okay, the license shall include the twenty-four hour period immediately before and after each event. In order to allow for the proper delivery and disposal of all alcoholic beverages. Guests shall have identification on their person and those who are twenty-one years or older will be given wristbands. Proper signage posted and approved barriers installed. Notifying guests that alcohol must be contained in the designated area only. Satisfactory inspection shall be performed prior to the start of the first event by the fire, building, and health departments.
Is there a second?
Second.
Motion made by Kristen, seconded by Julianne. Any other discussion? All those in favor say aye. Lisa?
Aye.
Kristen?
Aye.
Laura?
Aye.
Julianne?
Aye.
I also vote aye. Vote is unanimous in favor. Permission granted. Thank you very much. Best of luck to you.
Hope it's a success.
Thank you. Thank you all.
Thank you.
Good.
For coming.
Excellent. Next on our agenda, we have Jason Little, the Finance Director, to discuss approval and execution of bond anticipation notes in advances in lieu of borrowing. I'll also make a note that we're going to be taking item eight consideration and vote on the two percent cola. Immediately after this item, because Jason's also involved in that item and number seven Metro West, we will get to immediately after that item, which is number eight on the agenda. Folks following at home, Jason? Welcome to our meeting. Tell us about this item.
Thank you, Mister Chair. Well, I'm here to ask you folks to vote to accept the winning bids for our bond anticipation notes, which sold. It's four million, three hundred seventy-eight thousand dollars of notes that you'll be approving. I missed who the clerk was, but that person will have to be sure to come in to sign these notes later this week. But we need to get these out to bond counsel by the end of the week. So typically, just so you know, you probably read the memo that was in your packet that describes everything that I'm asking tonight. The winning bid was a net interest rate of three point five nine five two percent. So the good news here is that for our F Y twenty-four budget, typically we have to do the budget before the results of the sale are known. And we have a sufficient amount in the budget, so we'll have a savings of about one point four percent. So that's about sixty thousand dollars less than what we had prepared in the budget across. Multiple funds for all these various purposes that we're borrowing for. So typically, again, the process is that we issue short term debt until a project is. Very substantially complete, then we would issue long term debt or bonds. So notes are one year in length, so we'll be back here next year, probably renewing these, these notes for these purposes. We also follow a best practice where we pay down the debt, so next year we'll be borrowing less for these notes because we've appropriated some principal. So it's to the. To the user at home, like we are, it's basically the same as long term debt. We are making principal payments on this, on these items. In addition, before we, when we approve something new, like we did at town meeting this year, we had to. borrowing authorizations that were approved, we also can issue advances in lieu of borrowing where at the start of the fiscal year, we can advance the money to ourselves before actually going out to the market and borrowing. Those two items would be the fire engine for nine hundred thousand dollars and the DPW tight tank for four hundred seventy five thousand dollars. So I'm asking the group board to approve advances in lieu of borrowing to be effective July first for for those two items. And I went through this relatively quickly, but if any, if I missed something or anybody has any questions, I'm here to answer them.
Questions from the board. Julianne and then Laura.
So so Jason, the only person who has to sign this is the clerk?
I know the 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 board will have to come in, but the clerk is there there's one specific document that the clerk definitely has to sign. So we need a majority of the board to sign everything. I mean, it it would be preferable if everybody came in and signed everything, but there there is one document in particular where the clerk is is required to sign it.
Okay, thank you.
And our clerk is Laura. Laura, you had your hand up.
Thanks.
And I and I can come in and sign that tomorrow, so no problem. Just to, so it sounds like this is something that we approve every year? Or we discuss every year, the bond anticipation notes?
Well, yeah, every every year that there's short term debt, typically we either short issue short term debt or long term debt every year, and sometimes we issue both. So around this time, this timeframe, coming toward the end of the year, we we this is typically the the schedule that we're on.
Perfect. Thank you.
The only question I have going to this, you you essentially answered, which is this is starting to, you know, become a large amount of money and why not actually just issue a bond? It sounds like you're waiting until the next opportunity that we have a larger issue, which might be the fire station, given the way that things are are going.
Yeah, correct. So the 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 fire station related item in here is just for the land acquisition and and the design fees. So typically any like site work or or design plans get wrapped into a larger construction project borrowing. We would issue debt for this if, I mean, the the lifespan of a of design and plans is about five years, so the the principal payment's higher as as a result, but it gets wrapped into a project, it can be spread over the life of the debt. That that's getting too complicated, but there's a lot of considerations for when we issue long term debt, the market being one of them. We work with a financial advisor that takes these out to a market. We've marketed these to institutional investors. And we typically check in with them and they they're aware of what we're borrowing for and the lifespans of of the the assets that were you know, have acquired with this with these borrowing authorizations. So typically, we listen to them and they they give us advice as to when the right time is to to borrow long term.
Excellent. Thanks, Jason. Any other questions? Okay, is there a motion?
I move the board to adopt the vote as prepared by law lord as bond counsel relating to the approval of the town's June twenty twenty third notes as presented by Finance Director Jason Little.
Second.
Okay, motion made by Laura, seconded by Kristen. I will, for the benefit of the public at home, there is a two page motion that at bond council prepares for these things. We do not ask members to read all of them for obvious reasons. So so we're simply referencing that which has been distributed to the board. If anyone is interested in seeing that full motion, just contact the office here at Town Hall and and we'll be happy to send it out to anybody and it would probably my assumption is it will be reflected in the meeting minutes that come up for this meeting. Any other discussion from the board? All those in favor, Laura?
Aye.
Kristen?
Aye.
Julianne?
Aye.
Lisa? I also vote aye, vote as unanimous in favor. Thank you very much. Bands are approved. Next item on our agenda, and we're going to consideration and vote on an additional two two percent cost of living adjustment cola for retiree pension benefits. Jason, would you be able to describe this to us?
Sure. Hopefully, you had you folks had a chance to to read the memo that was in the packet. As you know, from the memo, in November of twenty twenty two, the governor signed a law into effect that allowed local retirement systems to grant additional cost of living adjustments for retirees. Our local retirement system, the Worcester Regional Retirement System had already voted a three percent cost of living adjustment. So this vote here would indicate our our approval or denial or or abstention from allowing another two percent to be added to that three percent that the board had already approved. And that would be retroactive back to July first for the for the town's retirees. The one thing to know about the the cost of living adjustment, the retirees that are being paid from the Worcester Regional Retirement System, it's a it's a base. There's a base to it of sixteen thousand dollars. So the additional two percent would be would mean that that the retiree would receive no more than three hundred twenty dollars. So we we were given an estimation formula for the cost for this. So the the way that this would roll out would be that this would be added into the town's assessment that we pay to to fund the retirement system for for our share of the retirement system. And that additional cost would be approximately forty one thousand dollars, given the formula that the retirement system gave us annually. So a again, the the method for this is that at least two thirds of the municipal units of the retirement of the regional retirement system that we belong to would have to approve this in order for the cola to be granted. And so there's there's fifty municipal units in the Worcester Regional System that we belong to. So at least thirty four would have to vote or or the the additional increase would not be granted. And I'll I'll try to answer any questions if anybody has any.
Thanks, Jason. Questions? Comments, thoughts? Julianne?
I don't I don't have any questions, but I think this sounds very reasonable.
I agree.
I agree.
Thank you. Is there a motion? See, where is that? Question, I think, because remember, we did this a little out of order.
Oh, oh, right, right, right. Yeah, sorry. I was looking at them. Couldn't find it. Okay. I move the board vote to approve a cost of living adjustment increase of an additional two percent for retirees receiving a pension from Worcester Regional Retirement System for fiscal year twenty twenty three.
Second.
Motion's been made by Kristen, seconded by Julianne. Any other discussion? All those in favor, Laura?
Aye.
Lisa?
Aye.
Julianne?
Aye.
Kristen?
Aye.
I also vote aye, vote as unanimous in favor. That is approved. So this needs to then get approved by other towns before it goes into effect, as Jason described. Jason, thank you very much for joining us this evening.
Yeah, thanks for having me. I appreciate it.
Okay, Lisa, you, yeah, Lisa, do you have your comment about this item or is it about the next item?
The one before, I have a motion that sounded like it was more in line with what Jason had had given us.
Advances in lieu of borrowing.
Did we miss the making a motion for the advances?
We did. We did. I apologize that those were we had two motions for the same agenda item and that's where I missed that. So let's take care of that. Lisa, thank you very much for catching that.
I move the board to approve and execute advances in lieu of borrowing effective July first, twenty twenty three relating to the borrowing authorizations approved at the April twenty fourth, twenty twenty three town meeting and is presented by the Finance Director Jason Little.
Second.
Okay, very good. Motion made by Lisa, seconded by Julianne. Any other discussions? All those in favor, Kristen?
Aye.
Lisa?
Aye.
Julianne?
Aye.
Laura?
Aye.
I also vote aye, vote as unanimous in favor. Now, thank you very much, Jason.
Thank you, everyone.
Thank you, Jason.
Okay, thanks a lot. Next up, before we begin, the item on Metro West Collaborative Development, I think Lisa, you had said that you had something you wanted to inform the board of?
Indeed. So being my first meeting and trying to make sure everything's working right, I did try to address the concern regarding the conflict of interest that was posed by a few residents. So I have still knocked it back from the Boston Ethics Commission regarding my close proximity to the White Cliffs and Town Council did advise that I recuse myself from the discussion this evening. So I will be doing that and and I will continue to research a definitive answer. So we'll see you in a little while.
Very good. Thank you very much, Lisa. I I appreciate that greatly. This certainly makes our discussion a little bit little bit cleaner tonight, removing any any question about conflicts. Thank you very much. My suggestion, rather than leave the virtual meeting entirely, if you want to turn off your camera and turn off your microphone, I think that's that's sufficient for this case and then you'll be able to observe when we end this discussion item and rejoin us.
Thank you very much.
Thank you, Lisa. All right, now we will begin Metro West Collaborative Development Discussion and Vote on Reuse Proposal for White Cliffs. As I think many people know, we've been discussing for several of the last meetings, a proposal that was received by the White Cliffs Committee regarding a redevelopment opportunity for the White Cliffs property that the town approved the purchase of in two thousand sixteen. Very quickly to summarize that process, the that committee issued an RFP request for proposals from outside organizations for for what they might want to do with the property and required some financial clarifications to confirm that they'd be able to to do that. That committee received three proposals, two of which were determined to be insufficient from the the level of financial detail to confirm they'd be able to to perform the work that they were proposing. This was the only one that could, so thus forth by almost by default, if you will, it was it was approved not unanimously by that committee, I think it was four to one and brought forth to this board for discussion. The the decision before us tonight is essentially to open negotiations on an option to purchase, which is somewhat akin to a purchase and sale agreement that most people are familiar with, who've gone through the purchase of a house. If this board approves it, it would come back to this board at some point in the future for approval. It would also absolutely need to go to town meeting for for at least two or three different articles. The reason it is before us tonight is that the developer, Metro West Design Collaborative, has informed us that to meet their grant timeline, certain grants were only available for application certain times of year. And they need to make use of substantial grants to for this project that they will they need us to make a decision one way or the other tonight. And if our decision is to move forward, that we would need to schedule a special town meeting in the September timeframe again, to further along that process. So we've had the opportunity to meet with them at a couple of prior board meetings. They attended and organized an open house at Town Hall back a few weeks ago. I think some of us attended, certainly a large number of public attended that. So so tonight's decision time on this, and they were not able to join us tonight, but I don't think that was necessary, given we've had plenty of opportunity to discuss with them in the past. I know we have one new member with us tonight, Laura, but you have been an active participant in some of those discussions. So I have no doubt that you're fully up to speed on these items and able to make a decision tonight. I don't know Bob or Lori or anybody else, if any one from staff wanted to present or update us on anything before we begin deliberations.
No, the only thing I would say was that apparently Metro West wasn't aware that they might be invited to the meeting tonight, so they have a conflict and no one from Metro West was able to be present for any questions.
Okay, I appreciate that. I think when we met with them last, the thought process was that they wouldn't be needed and and I don't I don't think it's unless we have substantial questions that somehow we didn't think about earlier. I'm not I'm not too worried about it. All right, any members of the board have any questions? We have Town Planner Lori Connors with us this evening, who has been through quite a bit of this process on behalf of the town. Julianne?
So if we vote to to award this option to purchase tonight, what tomorrow, what does that mean? Can if if somebody came to Town Hall and said, I'll buy the property for a million dollars, does that mean it's that we we could entertain that or like like if if we approve approve the option to purchase, does it tie our hands for any other possibilities starting tomorrow? Or Wednesday or whenever the papers are signed?
I'll I'll let town staff offer additional information, but at this point, because we're in the negotiation process already as a result of issuing and receiving the proposal, issuing the RFP and receiving this proposal, we really can't negotiate with anybody about else regarding this property. And I don't think that really changes if we move forward with this.
Yeah, and also certainly you would have to go through a public process again.
Yeah.
Okay.
Yeah, we would have to, if the board chose if if we didn't go forward with this, or if we went forward and town meeting did not approve or anything else happened where this process ended and we wanted to solicit additional bids from other people, additional proposals, we would have to also go through an RFP, whether that RFP would look the same or or similar or different to the original one. We could decide that later.
Okay, thank you.
Sure. Any other questions, comments from the board? We do have at least one hand up from from the public. Give everyone on the board the opportunity to weigh in first, then we'll open it up to the public. Before we open it up to public input, I will say we're going to allow people to speak and offer their opinions and suggestions on this. I will request that people try to be brief to allow as much time as possible for other people to also offer opinions and input and suggestions. I'm going to try to limit the public input to this item to thirty minutes just because we do have some other items on our agenda, but I'm also not going to cut people short if we're getting some some substantive new information or information we should think about. Laura, I'm sorry, did you have your hand up?
I did, I did. So at what point do we as a board chime in? We've received a lot of correspondence from folks in the town. Do we wait until after a motion has been made to discuss that or do we?
We can do that at any at any time. So if you if you would like to to summarize that, I can, if you'd like, whatever whatever board prefers.
Well, I if it's okay, then I'd like to make my comments just to get started. And I apologize if this is out of out of order. I recognize that this is my first meeting on the board and I have spent a lot of time participating in these conversations for the last year, several years. And I thank the town staff so much. They pulled all of their files together. I've been able to spend a lot of time combing through it, taking photocopies, and it's been a really appreciated process. And I really I feel very comfortable, you know, in just in expressing that there were a lot of people that opposed this. And I just want to acknowledge how much I appreciate their feedback and what they shared. I appreciate the town staff for giving me the opportunity to tour the White Cliffs and and see it on my own. I guess as far as, you know, I recognize how important the White Cliffs is to the town and there's so many different factors that come into this. The biggest, I guess, concern to me is the expense. So we we approved this at town meeting for for over two million dollars. There's going to be another eight hundred thousand dollars that's required for this project. And, you know, I'm looking ahead to some other really big expensive projects that we've got coming before the board. And my concern is that we're going to we're we're not going to be able to recoup that money. I think it was a hundred dollars I saw was the the cost that we're going to be obtaining back. And while I a hundred percent recognize how important it is to have these affordable housing options available, my biggest concern is the impact of this decision on the tax, you know, our tax base and our friends in the town who live on fixed income and don't have the ability to really afford all of these additional expenses. So I've really, I, I've done my best to try to summarize, you know, if this was my money and I was making this decision for myself, I just worry about the impact on, on our, on our taxes. So I just want to, I want to put that out there. I am, again, thankful for the overwhelming responses. I've talked to people who have said, you know, variety of, of, you know, of why. But ultimately, it's just the, the money behind it is the part that really is, it's, it's difficult for me to digest. So I'm open to any feedback if any, and I thank all the people that have reached out to me already on this and have had this discussion. And I just wanted, so that's my only comment at this point.
Thank you very much, Laura. Since you brought it up, I, I will also thank the public for providing us substantial input in the roughly year that I've been on the board. There has not been another issue that I think has, has touched the hearts and minds of the public the way this issue has, no matter what your viewpoint on this, whether you like this project, don't like this project or, or anything in between. Thank you very much to many, many, many people in the community for reaching out to us and, and giving us, in some cases, very detailed opinions. Their, their connections with the building, their connections with the property, whether it be emotional or, or physical as an abut or simply driving by it every day and seeing the beauty of the White Cliffs mansion. It, it's really been impressive, the way that I've realized that the town truly cares about this property. And, and I appreciate that a lot in regards to the, the financial items that you mentioned. All of the money that has been expended to date, as well as the eight hundred thousand dollars that the developer is proposing, is from CPC, which most, the money spent so far is from the historic third of, of CPC. And the, the money that they're looking to get, the additional eight hundred thousand dollars, would be from the affordable housing third of CPC. So it's not that that money can't be used for anything else that benefits other residents, but those, they can't be used to offset taxes or to pay for additional police or teachers or pave the roads or anything like that in most, in most cases. So it, it, it's, this is, it's a very complicated financial situation with, with the property as it is. And then this proposal makes it even, even more so. So I appreciate that. Any other comments or questions from the board before we open it up to the public? Kristen?
I had noticed some questions that in reading all the emails from people. Some things became unclear, some things became clear, and some things became unclear. So one of them is just this was the only viable option that has come forward, right?
It is the only proposal received by the White Cliffs Committee in response to the RFP that they deemed to be achievable.
And how long was that RFP, like, open? Whatever the word is.
Lori, would you be able to join us and let us know, or Julianne, if you know, because you're on that committee?
I believe that it was released in October and it was returned in December. So I believe it was open for sixty days. But there was a considerable, considerable amount of outreach that occurred prior to the release of the RFP. So I believe the outreach was approximately a month prior to that sixty day timeframe.
Okay, because one of the the main concerns of the people who are for this proposal is that White Cliffs, there's a lot of fear around this building. There's a lot of fear on both sides, which is really a shame. The fear on the side of the people who support the proposal seems to be that if we don't go through with the Metro West proposal and build an affordable housing apartment building right next to White Cliffs, then it will need, the building will need to be demolished because there isn't a Plan B. And that seems to be the, the, the great fear of, of a lot of those people. The fear of some of, there are a few fears of the people who are against the proposal, one being that and not in my backyard sort of a fear, which I can relate to, living on Bartlett Street. And that's not a reason to not go through with this proposal, unfortunately. You can't, you know, you live next to White Cliffs, and if it turns into an event space, you know, then will, then will it be really noisy? That sort of thing, there, there probably isn't much other than making it into a very quiet mansion with a beautiful park that really would be ideal for property values in that neighborhood. And like, I get it. I don't want to live down the street from Amazon, but I didn't, you know, there are certain things that people just don't get to pick when they've already bought their house and settled into a neighborhood. And sometimes things like this pop up. So it's not the then, that is a fear, right? And I get it, but one of the other fears of the people who are against White Cliffs is that and I'm just going to put this in my own words. The idea that we bought as a town, I was at that town meeting in twenty sixteen, that was a long time ago. I'm not sure why nothing was done with the building in that enormous amount of time. Which is frustrating now that we're talking about it so seriously. But regardless of that, at, at town meeting, we bought the building with the idea that we were the town was buying it so it didn't get torn down, so that it would get restored. I know that the, all the beautiful windows, the stained glass windows were taken out and they're in storage in Worcester. And people worked really, really hard to make this building, to save this building. And and I got a tour of it last fall. I wasn't able to make it the other day. But it, it really is a spectacular home. It really is a spectacular building. And if we're saving it by building a giant apartment building right next to it, is that really saving it? Especially since we don't really, I wasn't, Abe, I asked very pointed questions of Metro West last week because I had all of this in my head, and I wasn't able to get answers from them that satisfied me that they really have a good plan for what they're going to do with this house. They have never had to deal with, in any of their properties, they've never dealt with an antique home like this before. They've done some really wonderful things, and I would love to see them do a project in, in Northborough. And I am absolutely not against affordable housing. I do worry a little that it's in the Peaslee district because we just got a tour of Peaslee School last fall as well, and it's in terrible shape. And it needs a lot of work and it's very crowded and everything. But in any case, like, I'm sure I think an affordable housing in Northborough is a great idea, and there is probably a really good place for it. And I just am not convinced that next door to White Cliffs is the right place for it. Because if you just go back to that meeting and all the people talking about why they were voting to save this beautiful mansion, and I like antique homes too. I don't think on anyone's mind at the time was, well, we're not going to do anything for six years, and then we're going to have a really fast, well, fairly fast, it feels fast to us turnaround on, you know, we're going to have sixty days, and then we're going to have affordable housing, and then we're going to have to vote on it. And then we're just going to go ahead and do these apartments right next to and inside the mansion. I just, I don't think that was anybody's intention, and there were several emails sort of to that effect. And I really, I do feel for those people, because that's not what they signed up for when they voted to save this building. I, I really understand that. I feel I, I, there's fear, there's fear on both sides of it. I do feel like if we don't vote for it, we are kind of, I mean, a lot of people are like, oh, we'll get, you know, we'll get more proposals. But clearly, what Lori said, there weren't a lot of other proposals coming at Northborough. So we might have to have some great volunteers. We might have to have some amazing fundraising. It's going to be a lot of work. It's not going to be easy. All of the people who are paying attention tonight, who want to say, you know, I just want you to vote the way I want you to vote, and then I want to go back and mind my own business. Like, you have to understand that it's going to take a community to make that a beautiful, beautiful place. If you want that to be a beautiful place, you have to keep paying attention. You have to, you do have a chance to do that, but you have to pay attention, you have to volunteer, you have to give your own time. Because that's how these kinds of things get done. There isn't a millionaire who happens to own the building who's going to fix it up for us like happened in Southborough. That's not going to happen in Northborough. We're Pawnee, they're Eagleton. That's a Parks and Rec reference, in case you don't watch that show. But anyway, I, I just feel like I really want people to understand that if we don't go for the Metro West option, which is clearly sort of the, in a lot of people's minds, the safer option for the mansion, if we decide that's not right for that property, it's, it is taking the town into a dangerous area where eventually, if we don't get the community support and we don't get the fundraising and we don't have anybody else step up to help us, it might get demolished. So I just want everyone to understand that. And that's my, that's my more than two cents. Thank you.
Thank you, Kristen. Any other comments from the board before we open it up to the public? Julianne?
So, um, to assuage your fears a little bit, I, I do believe that the RFP could go out again differently. But that would take, that, that's going to take a lot of work, and I think you're right, Kristen. Because a lot of the comments we've received are, you know, people want this to, to have a lot of community use. And I think that that's one of the, one of the things that's bothering me about the Metro West proposal is that there's very, that very little opportunity for community use. But one of the things I'd like to add, as we listen to the public and then make our decision, is that this project is being discussed and listened to tonight in isolation of a whole bunch of other things that we have going on in town. Downtown revitalization, the entire master plan, town hall feasibility. And I think that selling the property for a hundred dollars tonight would prevent us from considering that property and any of the, any of the plans that we have moving forward. I think it's essential that Matt, that White Cliffs is coordinated with all of the other projects that we have going on. And thus far, I don't see that that has happened. So I, I, I would like to have a whole lot more time to figure out how to do that and make sure that we're not selling a really valuable piece of property for a hundred dollars. And, and, and the good chance that we, that we could use it. So that's my comment.
All right, unless there are no other comments from the board or input from staff, for now, I'm going to open it up to the public. And the first person I see having a hand raised is Brian Zeiger. Brian, if you could identify yourself and let us know what's on your mind.
Hey, thank you. Can you hear me?
We do.
All right, my name is Brian Zeiger. I'm on Two Stratton Way. I just wanted to talk about the people that do matter, Kristen. And throughout this years-long process, they were left out, people were left out, and that's the most important part, the people that live in the neighborhood. There has been no consideration of neighbors up to this point. The reuse committee did not solicit any input or any type of discussion with the abutters or the neighborhood prior to compiling an RFP and then recommending this option. That's a failure, in my opinion. Let me tell you about these neighbors that all of a sudden don't matter because of this building. Many people in the neighborhood have been in their homes for thirty-plus years, and it's not, oh, well, you moved next to a neighborhood and they're going to build something. So I was a little disgusted to hear that. They also have contributed millions of dollars in tax revenue for the Northborough community, volunteered thousands of hours of community service over those thirty years. They deserve to be involved, not left out. Let me tell you about the neighborhood. It consists of second, third, and fourth generation Northborough residents, a disabled veteran, a school nurse, a school district administrator, small business owners, doctors, professors, and a lawyer. And this description is most likely your neighborhood. Think about your neighborhood. I'm asking a select board, anyone else online, take a minute, think about the street you live on, and then think about tripling the amount of people that live there with just one building. Regardless of their income level or cost of their homes, there is no positive impact to adding this housing project in a residential neighborhood. So listen, the building itself may be worth saving, but if the ultimatum is that to save the building, we need to add approximately a hundred and fifty more people to the neighborhood, then with this particular plan that they want you to bring to town meeting, the building is not worth saving. It's as simple as that. I'm going to wrap this up. We can discuss the pros and cons of affordable housing in town. You can manipulate however many numbers you want. You could talk about whatever MBTA state mandate you want. The affordable housing discussion should not be the rider that goes with preserving White Cliffs. Find other locations in town to add affordable housing that aren't in the middle of an established residential neighborhood. Need an option in a realistic and less intrusive proposal before this is brought to a town meeting. I'm asking you to use rational, common sense and compassion here, which I didn't hear earlier. If you vote yes, and are on the line to support the idea to bring this particular project to town meeting, you are voting against your neighbors, friends, and community. Thank you, that's it.
Thank you very much, Brian. Uh, next up, we have John Marr. John, I'll bring you in. Get to identify yourself and let us know what's on your mind.
Hey, good evening. My name's John Marr. I'm from forty-four Weston Terrace. I want to echo some of the sentiment that select persons in Hirsch has articulated here. The RFP, just to, to note, being in commercial real estate finance, the timing of the RFP is something that should be examined. That was between the months of October and December of twenty twenty-two. Is that correct? Yes. And that was during the time when the Fed was at its record rates of, uh, record, uh, levels of raising, uh, the Fed borrowing rate. So increasing interest rates. So from a development perspective, no developer really was going to sit there and take the time to, to analyze a specific project in light of volatility in the interest rate market. So that's just one thing. Second of all, you know, I, I can completely understand the sentimental, sentimental value of the building. It's a beautiful building. My family moved here about ten years ago, so I don't have the long ties, I guess, the long, long-term ties to the town. And so I just think to preserve the building through this means it, it would be financially irresponsible of this board. And I think it should be something that would be, need to be examined further if the board were even to bring, to try to pursue this project even further. I think it's a beautiful building, don't get me wrong, and I think we need affordable housing. It is a crisis in this country. It just doesn't need to be at this particular location. Thank you.
Thank you very much, John. Next up, we have, hey, Scott Rogers. I think we've met him before. Scott, if you could identify yourself, let us know what's on your mind. Welcome back.
Yeah, hi, thanks. Scott Rogers at twenty-six Tomahawk Drive. I guess one thing to ask, you know, to help you make, make your decision is if you've all had a chance to look back at the pro forma usage scenarios that was done by the reuse committee. And, and how well you've, you've thought about Um, and, and how well you've, you've thought about if you do not go forward with this proposal. What each of your vision, and, and if you have a consensus vision of what should be done with the property. A lot of the thought has been in preserving the mansion for community use. And that municipal use was the most expensive scenario. So in that light, have you thought through what the financial implications of that are and how that would be financed? If you don't move forward with, um, the proposal that's in front of you. I've got some other questions, but I think I'm gonna pause right there, cuz like, that, that's a fundamental basis right there. You know, if you. What is your vision for the property? And, and then once a vision, there's consensus on the vision, then start talking about approaches and specific plans. But right now, I'm, I'm hearing that you have a much different vision for the property. And so maybe discussing that would help put the entire proposal that's in front of you in context.
Thanks, Scott. Uh, next up, we have Mike Hirsch. Mike, if you could identify yourself and let us know what's on your mind.
Hello, thank you for taking my call. Uh, I'm Michael Hirsch. I live on Nineteenth Smith Road. Um, I've been a surgeon for forty-four years now. And one of the things that we, uh, do in, in approaching patients that works. Is coordinating all the different comorbidities, we call them, the different types of problems that. Uh, a patient has before you go diving in and doing a quick fix with an operation. Uh, we'd love to be able to do that, but most people have a lot of things going on, and I think one of the sick, sickest parts of Northborough is our downtown. And we have, uh, so many committees that are working on revitalization, master planning, master planning, implementation, zoning, planning. Uh, it, it, it's all done in a siloed way. And I think you, as the select board, are the last bastion of trying to coordinate a vision. For the downtown, including the White Cliffs. I think it's a beautiful building. I'm not totally sold that it has to be preserved. But I am pretty much convinced that there is no. Coordination between any of the committees that are looking at the corridor between the Town Commons and Chet's Diner. And that's one of the things that distinguishes Northborough from the towns around us. We don't have a vital downtown. We have a, a, a collection of. You know, chop shops and little restaurants and a few, uh, uh, other non-coordinated kind of, uh, venues that. Don't make it attractive to, to be in the downtown. I think doing the right thing with White Cliffs would really change that, but I don't think doing. The proposal as it's described is the right thing, cuz I don't think it's really been coordinated. So that's my suggestion is. Get the input from all these other committees and, uh, make sure that whatever you pick for the White Cliffs. Fits into the vision. If someone tries to build up some kind of a, you know, crazy castle on that hill. Uh, that doesn't fit into the decor that's going to be asked to be used in the other parts of the downtown redevelopment. You're just gonna end up with another white elephant.
Thank you very much, Mike. Uh, next up, we have Anthony video. Oh. Anthony, if you could identify yourself and let us know what's on your mind, please.
Hi, this is video twenty-six Stratton Way. Um, so I'm asking you guys just to, you know, do not vote in favor of this proposal tonight. Um, open it up to another round of RFPs, but do it right this time. Ask the, can you, ask the community what they would like to see happen with this property. We were never given that opportunity last time. You know, we were never asked. We want it into a, turn it into a park or green space. Do we wanna just sell it to the highest bidder? Do we wanna, you know, see every purpose into some kind of STEM extension for the library or schools? Do we wanna see it turn, turn into town offices? We were never asked any of these questions. Um, we just let, you know, five people on a special committee determine the future of this property without any community, community involvement or outreach. Um, and I just don't think that's right. I think if, if, I think we should, we need to do it over again and start over by asking the community what they would like. Before any RFP process. Thank you.
Thank you, Anthony. Next up, we have Christine. No last name mentioned here, but if you could, uh, identify yourself. And let us know what's on your mind, please.
Hi, I'm Christine Maxfield. I am on, uh, I'm twenty-two, two twenty-two Church Street. Um, I know that I did send in an email with a lot of my concerns, and they were addressed by most of you guys, uh, Lauren and Kristen. Um, you know, traffic, um, and the school overcrowding. Um, but especially in a, Kristen spoke about this very eloquently. I did not vote to take on this building so that it could become housing. I voted. To take this on so that we could preserve it for the whole community. Um, and I agree with everybody else that's, that's spoken that, you know, we just need to take a step back and say, you know, this kinda went off the rails. We need to rethink this, start again. I know it's much more convenient to just say, well, we've already started these agreements and we'll keep going, but. It's just not what the community really wants, and it's not what's best for everybody. And I really, um, agree with, um, what Julianne was saying that. We could, we have this opportunity now with the downtown revitalization program. To tie this in, if we were to make this, you know, try to get White Cliffs. Something like maybe an event space, maybe an art space, who knows, but something that could pull in. You know, things to do. There's nothing to do downtown. There's nothing to do at night. Um, or even during the day or on the weekends. And, you know, if White Cliffs was. Something more that had more draw, um, we could tie it into this, um, attempt to, you know, make our downtown a little more appealing for everybody. Um, so that's my two cents. Thank you so much.
Thank you very much, Christine. Next up, we have Carter Brandon. Carter, bring you in. If you could unmute yourself and let us know what's on your mind. Identify yourself as well, please. Uh, we only hear you very choppily. I wouldn't say that we can hear you well.
It's better. Um, am I good now?
Can folks hear him well enough? Uh, uh, do me a favor, Carter, if you could just speak as loudly as you can, as close to the microphone as you can. We'll do our best.
Okay. So.
I'm, I'm sorry, Carter. Um, I'm gonna, uh, sort of send you back to the attendees list, and if you can. Um, reconnect or, or figure out whatever's going on with your microphone, feel free to raise your hand again, and I will recognize you later. Um, apologies, we just can't hear you well. Uh, next up, Eric Martin. Eric, welcome. If you could unmute yourself, identify yourself, and let us know what's on your mind, please.
Uh, thank you. Uh, Eric Martin. I reside at thirty-two Weston Terrace. Um, which is, for, I'm sure everybody knows, but, you know, we're pretty close to White Cliffs. And, uh, I'm speaking to encourage the board to vote against this motion due to a few factors. Uh, that pretty much everybody's already brought up. So first and foremost, I just really don't understand how this honors the town's vote of preser- preserving. The historic building. Um, and it's not, I don't have anything against, um. The housing, I don't, I don't want, I don't think any housing, I don't think any, adding any additional type of housing or any large structure to that really helps that out. Uh, also, uh, uh, I have two children who are at Peaslee, and as also was previously stated, Peaslee's just, it's overcrowded. It, it's, I definitely know it's the next on the list to be fixed. Just adding extra people there is not good. Um, you know, for children who receive services, right? So OT, PT, anything like that, uh, those, those specialists are in closets. I've been in them. Um, and sometimes those closets have partitions, so that way multiple children can be served at once, but that's not honoring. That, that, that's not handling confidentiality and privacy for these people. That, that's not serving our students the best way possible. Um, uh, also just, you know, I, I definitely think that the, we need to think about how this ties in with Master Plan Implementation Committee. Um, there's definitely some good stuff that's in there. And also just for, I think residential at all, that wouldn't be, wouldn't be good. I know it needs to be tied out to RFP. Um, again, just, I know we're short on time, so what everybody, I pretty much echo what everybody else said. Thank you.
Thank you very much, Eric.
Thank you.
Uh, next up, hold on, or Eric's hand. We did that. Uh, Carrie M. I could guess what the M stands for, but I will let you, uh, identify yourself once you've unmuted, Carrie.
Hi, Carrie Martin, sixteen Hemlock Drive. Um, I'm a, actually a member of the planning board, and I, for those who don't watch the planning meetings, I just wanted to. Bring up here that the planning board did discuss changing the zoning in the White Cliffs area, um, specifically for this proposal or, or the RFP anyway. We received a pretty hefty petition against it. We had about seventy-five at the time. I think now that petition has come to you guys with about two hundred and fifty citizens on it. That's more than we get at town meeting. Um, so I think that's pretty significant. We ended up pulling the zoning amendment proposal to change the zoning over there. Um, just because the board really didn't think it was a fully baked plan to go changing zoning. I, I personally, as a resident, still don't, but also, um, the, my understanding of this is a forty B, friendly or not, it's, uh, circumvents our zoning. And I think that further ties our hands. Um, I think our hands have been tied enough with this, and, uh, it really concerns me. Uh, to be in a spot where we can circumvent zoning. We have citizens of at least two fifty, and who knows how many more through. The feedback that you've been receiving, certainly the planning board sees some of those emails as well. Um, I, I just think it's something that we need to put more thought into and, and start over, start fresh. It doesn't seem like, um, there's a whole lot of support for this in general. So anyway, I wanted to share that. Thanks so much for your time.
Thank you very much, Carrie. Next up, Todd Helwig. Todd, you could unmute, identify yourself, and let us know what's on your mind, please.
Uh, sure. Todd Helwig, four four one Howard Street. Uh, as many of you may know, I was the past chair of the, uh, malign, much maligned White Cliffs Reuse Committee. Uh, addressing some of the concerns. First, we were accused of being, taking too long and also rushing the job. So it, we were, we were at it for at least four years. There was a pandemic in the middle. Uh, we hired many consultants, uh, to help us with this process between, uh. Financial people, architectural planners, a whole host, and we came up with the near unanimous recommendation of this, and we'll talk about that a little bit. But there was also the discussion that there wasn't a lot of input. Well, we had, you know, we had representatives from conservation, uh, the CPC, the town planner. The select board, uh, we had the, uh, DPW director, the historic commission, the design review board. These were all people that participated in the process. Of doing this and making the final recommendation. Um, like I said, we had, it was the near unanimous recommendation of our committee. We also had, the historic district has recommended it. We also have the, um, or Affordable Housing Commission has recommended this project. We also have CPC, which has recommended this project. And then on to some of the actual, uh, points that have been made. One is sort of the impact on the budget, and I would suggest respectfully that it's kind of the opposite of what has been discussed here. So we're only being asked to contribute CPC funds, which have already been raised through taxes. And in fact, a lot of that money's coming from other taxpayers outside of Northborough. So to do any, whatever the plan B is, which no one's identified, will probably actually cause taxpayers a lot more than what we're doing here. Um, there was the discussion about giving up the property for a mere hundred dollars. Well, I believe the proposal is that they're gonna pay taxes on the property once they get this thing built. Which right now, it is not getting taxed at all. So the concept here was always to take the property back, get it under control, put it back so it could be profitably used by somebody, which is what this group is gonna proposing to do. Um, let's see, you know, there was a lot of references to the goal was historic preservation at town meeting. So there was a. A public vote about what to do with this, and it was historic preservation. This is the only proposal over all those years that actually does that. This accomplishes the historic protection goal, and it has the benefit of using somebody else's money to do it. There was a discussion about the town's not gonna have access. Well, this board is in charge of the process of negotiating the purchase and sale agreement with the buyer. Negotiate that access. Put it into the agreement. Tell them you want three hundred and sixty-five, twenty-four hours a day access. It's up to you. Don't let that be a reason not to vote in favor of the project. Um. Let's see, what else? We talked about, um, planning, right? Good planning and downtown redevelopment. Well, the best way to get downtown redeveloped is actually have people downtown, right? So you were actually looking to. Uh, renovate this historic property that everybody wanted renovated. Plus, we're gonna get people downtown to support the businesses and the changes that you want. And then the last point, and I'm sure others will make this too, there is an affordable housing crisis in Massachusetts and in Northborough. And this is a perfect site for it. Thank you.
Thank you very much, Todd, and, um, I, I hope not many have, um, maligned the work that you and others did on the White Cliffs. Committee, you worked very, very hard, did a lot of research, worked with a lot of people over a large number of years. Um, whether or not we, we happen to agree with, um, what turned out to be the only proposal that you received, um, please don't let that, um, that color, the work that you did. So thank you very much for that. Todd's hand, and next up, we have, uh, Scott Rogers again. Alright, so I, I see four more hands up. I would ask that if you don't already have your hand up, that, um. Well, somebody's already doing that again. Um, we really wanna, wanna move this along, so I'm gonna ask, um, those who I'm gonna allow speaking to speak, uh, quickly, so we can. Uh, get on with the meeting and, and make a decision on this. Thank you very much. Uh, Scott Rogers, welcome back.
Yeah, thank you. Scott Rogers again from twenty-six Tomahawk Drive, and it, it works well that speaking right after Todd, because that was the point. I was gonna make about, um, the expenses, right? The municipal use, as I mentioned, was the largest pro forma scenario. Um, event space, kind of the, the night, you know, what, what we wish it could go back to being was the least feasible business case in the pro forma scenarios. So unfortunately, what we would like to have happen there doesn't make business sense in the, in the market at that time nor in the market at this time. So as you, as you take your vote, um, and have your discussion, I really hope that you express what your plan B is. And how you're gonna get there financially. Uh, cuz I, right now, you've got probably on the order of a twenty million dollar project. Uh, if you try to do what folks are asking for White Cliffs. Thanks.
Thanks, Scott. Uh, Carter Brandon, we'll give it another shot. Carter, if you could identify yourself, hopefully we can hear you better this time.
Hey, hello, uh, can you hear me better?
Hey, we hear you.
Okay, perfect. Uh, Carter Brandon, twenty-two Sherland Drive. Um, well, first, I just had a, a question about the kind of process here. Um, so if this is approved tonight, um, are you kind of. Approving it, you know, this is the, the, the plan kind of as is, or is this kind of. You know, between this and a, in a upcoming special town meeting that is the, is the plan gonna be kind of some of the details negotiated or adjusted? As that goes on?
I'll do my best to answer that, Carter. Um, we've had substantive discussions with the, uh, the developer for this. They've informed us. For example, some people say, could you make it smaller? Could you have it, have fewer apartments? And they said, no, it really needs to be. Of this size, the fifty-two units to make the finances work of the grants they need to receive, both to, uh, restore the White Cliffs mansion. As well as to construct the apartment building next to it. Um, so I don't see that changing, uh, in theory, that's open to negotiations, but, uh, but they've, they've said that that's. Really is gonna be what it'll be. Um, we would have the opportunity to negotiate on things such as how the public has, has access to it. Um, we would, uh, through the entire process, we would have to do a, a traffic study, we'd have to do. Um, you know, they would do, uh, a study to determine ledge for constructability. We talked about that at the last meeting. Um, people were concerned about blasting nearby. We could certainly have discussions about the color and design of the building and everything else. Um, the steps would be that, um, it, the, this board would need to approve the option to purchase. Um, the developer has requested, I think, that, that that be after town meeting, that. Um, the developer has requested, I think that, that that be after town meeting, that uh, that that get finalized. That itself is probably negotiable. Town meeting would have to approve um, the, uh, the ability for this board to, to sell the project, to sell the property rather, um, would have to, um, town meeting would have to approve a um, a historic designation on the property, which is required based upon how we uh, uh, purchased the building. Uh, they may have to, depending upon actions that the board takes, um, approve a change in zoning perhaps relative to the MBTA uh, requirements uh, that we've talked about at prior meetings. Um, and this project would then after town meeting also go before the zoning board, which would go through um, its usual process for um, for, for projects of this size that they would have to go through and under the, the forty B designation, the zoning board is the authority for dealing with the, the details of the project. So um, if this board does approve it tonight, there's a lot more before us, but it does commit us to going down that path. If, if that answers your question, Carter.
Okay, yeah, that, that answers that question. Thank you. Um, it's my other sort of input, um, kind of yes, almost regardless of whether this gets approved or not, um, I think that I guess with the kind of historic designation um, of the, of the property, um, there are three other structures that are, would not be owned by the town. They're privately owned that are connected with um, the mansion historically that um, some of the historic um documentation has kind of listed out that it would be preferable if the, the, the mansion is listed or, or has a preservation restriction if that could be extended to um, the other connected properties, either to maybe a historic district or something like that. That's a
Good idea. We, we have a historic district commission that would undertake um, that, that discussion.
Um, and then also, I mean, I guess just, I, I really think, yeah, kind of regardless of whether it gets approved or not, um, the kind of process around what, what's being done with the property should take into account kind of the surrounding area. I, I think, I mean, you know, the kind of downtown revitalization project, um, that was kind of doing kind of down Main Street more, um, something similar to that, regardless of whether this gets approved or not, should probably be done with this. Um, kind of part of the downtown area, um, whether there's a kind of changes to the traffic, but I think especially the kind of pedestrian, um, kind of trying, if you're going to add more dense housing to uh, the area, which I think would be a good thing both for this property as well as potentially rezoning some of the, the business district around there to allow their kind of buy right housing for the MBTA housing, um, stuff, but to, to try to like make this neighborhood more of a walkable neighborhood, if you're adding housing to it, would be a benefit to probably the whole town of again, having a better downtown area.
Thank you, Carter. Does that conclude your comments?
Um, yep, I think so. Thank you.
Alright, thank you very much. Okay, um, Amanda, Amanda Mallett. Bring you in here. Identify yourself, let us know what's on your mind.
Um, hi, sorry, it's actually Mark.
Okay, hi, Mark.
Uh, we're, um, I'm at twelve oh seven Avalon Drive. You know, people kept bringing up Peaslee and I understand it hasn't been renovated since it was built in the sixties. But the that side of Route twenty isn't even zoned to go to Peaslee. They're zoned to go to Z. And, and like, and Peaslee and Z have the least amount of students in them uh, this year, at least.
Yeah, we, we don't have members of the school committee here to, to answer questions about school districting. Unfortunately. Mark, does that
Yeah, that was all I had.
Okay, no, I appreciate that. I mean, I, I, I will say that whether this project goes forward or other apartments that are possible to happen due to some required zoning that uh, what we call the MBTA zoning rules um, will require us to consider doing. Um, unfortunately, the school committee will have a lot of work before, before them to figure out how to accommodate uh, some level of influx of students sometime in the future. Um, I think that's going to happen, whether it happens here, whether it happens, you know, further the west end of town. Um, hard, hard to know, but uh, that's, that's something the town was going to have to grapple with. Thank you, Mark. Uh, Tom Reardon. Tom, if you could unmute, identify yourself and let us know what's on your mind.
Yes, uh, Tom Reardon, seven Sunset Drive. I was also a member of the White Cliffs reuse committee. And um, I'm firmly in the camp that Chris and I identified as having a fear of what will happen to this building if this doesn't proceed to town meeting. And part of that has to do with the lack of interest in event men, venues uh, coming to town to uh, individual restaurants. I mean, there was a lot of outreach by Norm Corbin and others. And when you look at the numbers that were developed by the consultants, six million dollars to stabilize the building, but it would not be usable because it's not accessible, it's not safe, it's unhealthy, and you'd have to make a considerable investment to preserve it, yes, but you wouldn't be able to use it. To get actual use of the building, the estimates probably are eight to ten million dollars. So if the community is going to step up and raise that kind of money, you also have to factor in, you have to pay seventy-five to a hundred thousand dollars a year just to keep electricity running, the, the police review, the dehumidification, um, and the continued decline of the bill buildings envelope proceeds apace. The soffits, the windows, the siding, the masonry. As you take your time, raising millions of dollars, the building will continue to decline and your costs will rise. So that's why I'm firmly in the fear group of what will happen to this building if you try to go out for another seat. Proposals. Go through the review process, spend tens of thousands of dollars doing that again, and you don't get people to come in to do the kind of thing you want. That's why I fear that in three to four years, town will continue to lose money on this property and they will sell for two to two and a half million dollars. And the use will be Business West in the front of the property, residential C in the back. So you're going to get commercial buildings in the front on Main Street and you're getting five or six duplexes behind it. Is that what the community wants? I think not, but that's, that's the likely scenario if we don't address the options that we have before us. So those are my fears. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you, Tom. Yeah, I, I see three more hands up and that's going to be the end of uh, public input on this item and then we'll return to the board's discussion. I see S. Youssef. Bring you in, if you could unmute, identify yourself, let us know what's on your mind, please.
Hi, Stephanie Isa, five Johnson Ave. So this is kind of a two cents comment from a resident. Um, I don't necessarily oppose or advocate for the current proposed project. You know, if we do move forward, I think we definitely need a traffic light, maybe a sidewalk on Maple and a plan for the influx of students, whether it be at Peaslee or Z or whatever school district they're in. However, what I am advocating for is not spending any more money on this money pit of a building. Um, I'm not against preserving history. Please don't think that, you know, that I'm, I'm anti historian. I just think the town's money would be better spent on helping the people of our town rather than preserving a single building. That's all I have. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Okay, next up we have Anthony Sirvideo again. Anthony, identify yourself one more time, if you could, let us know what's on your mind.
Hi, it's Anna Sirvideo from twenty-six Stratton Way. Um, who, and I helped, I started the petition and got the two hundred and fifty, almost two hundred and fifty signatures. And I just wanted to mention that all the committees that Todd mentioned don't even add up to the two hundred and fifty people who signed that they did not want this. And public input wasn't requested. It was the committees that they spoke to. No one ever asked me. I only found out this was happening by a Facebook post and I'm in the backyard. And the more time we spend pursuing this proposal is the more time the property sits unused. The public has largely showed that this proposal was not what the community wanted when they voted to keep it. And I think that it's it feels wrong that this is even being considered at this point. It just seems like this is not a viable option. This is not doing what the town asked. This is working around us. Thanks.
Excellent. And our last comment will come from Dick S. Dick, if you could identify yourself, let us know what's on your mind, please.
Yes, I'm Richard Scotland. I live at fifteen Stratton Way. Uh, it's good to be here tonight. Uh, it's my first participation in this process. Uh, I am opposed to the, the project. Uh, I don't see how we can spend two plus million dollars uh, on a piece of property and then sell it for one hundred million dollars. That's one. Two, the traffic out there.
One hun- I was, sorry to interrupt. You said one hundred million? I wish we could sell it.
I'm sorry, one hundred dollars. I mean, yes, one hundred dollars. My, I, I, I stand corrected. Sorry about that. The other thing is that, that traffic out there on Route twenty, it's bad enough as it is now. I live on Stratton Way. When you got to pull in off of Route twenty on Stratton Way at nighttime, it is a tough time. It's, you've it's dangerous. It's dangerous. Uh, regardless of where the kids actually go to school, some may go to Peaslee, some may go to Z. If any of those kids go to Peaslee, they would have to walk, potentially walk across that Route twenty. God bless anybody that tries to cross Route twenty, even though there is a crosswalk there. I am not in favor of this. That will be number one, two, three, four streets coming out within a very, very short period of time. I mean, it, it's going to be just a nightmare. And I am concerned about safety, safety of the children in particular that may be on that property or playing on, in that area. Um, so for that reason, I am against this project. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Okay, um, any questions or comments from members of the board? I think the three of you have, yeah, sure, go ahead, Kristen.
Okay, so um, a couple of things that I didn't say before that had been in um, my notes. I a, a, a lot of people mentioned, yeah, the, the people in town um, weren't involved. Other people in the neighborhood, whatever. Um, I think that was something that kept popping up in the emails and that is a, that is definitely if they never had a voice, um, that is a concern. I suppose one way to have a voice would be to apply to be on the White Cliffs committee in the first place. But even if they had done that, there was only a few spots, so not all of them would have had a voice regardless. Um, so what I wanted to ask, and I'm not sure who would answer the question, is um, would there have been a way or would there be a way going forward if we do this again to make sure that the people in town have um, input earlier on in the process with the White Cliffs committee? Because like, as Anna pointed out, it was just other boards and committees that the committee um, spoke to, not neighbors and local residents.
I'll, I'll answer that as best I can. Um, the, the White Cliffs committee um, that previously exists, I the board hasn't taken a formal vote, but their charge was to deliver us a project for our consideration. They have done that. So I, I think in essence, their job is done, therefore they're considered disbanded. Um, if this board does not go forward with it, or this board does go forward with this proposal, but town meeting says no, this board can, can take any number of directions. We, you know, we would probably want to form another committee. Um, I would advocate for including some members of the prior committee as well as uh, some who have, have been vocal um, about this project to, to help us gain consensus about how to do that. Um, we can absolutely ask or direct that board to have, you know, a public input forum at the high school uh, auditorium or at the library or do surveys. There were, I think, a lot of things that, that could have been done. I don't know why they weren't done. I think if they had been done, we'd be in a different place, having a different discussion tonight, even if it was the same project before us, because people would have been heard and um, maybe some questions answered that may potentially have made them, you know, more satisfied with a direction like this, or maybe they, the White Cliffs committee of old would have realized they have to exclude housing and do things a different way. I'm not, I'm not sure. But we, we would have the op, opportunity and really we'd be required to figure out how to move forward uh, in a way that best served the town. Hope that answers the question at least a little bit, Kristen.
Um, yeah, I mean, that answers the going forward part of the question, I guess. It doesn't really matter um, whether of the previous committee, uh, whether they could have entertained public comment or not. Um.
I think, I mean, I think they could have. I, I think that um, immediate abutters would not have been able to be on the proper, on the, that committee for ethics reasons. Um, eh, but they certainly could have, have held a public forum or a survey or something like that. It wasn't done as to why and so forth. Doesn't, doesn't really matter at this point.
Right.
Yes, yeah.
Because despite how I came across to that one first caller, I, I certainly do feel for these people. I just don't think that can be the only reason that you would vote against it because we represent the whole town, not just one neighborhood. And I think it's really important for everyone to understand that if we did that, we would never get anything done. Um, so, and the traffic study was another thing that we didn't talk about before. And a lot of emails brought it up, a lot of callers brought it up. Um, or traffic in general being a concern. It is a huge concern. I am the traffic and safety crazy person of this board, I think. I am always worried about traffic and safety. I cross at that spot oftentimes when I walk my dog and I swear, if my dog wasn't so cute, no one would ever stop for me. It is super dangerous. I've seen people fly through that crosswalk even though there's a person with a baby carriage waiting to cross. It's terrible. Um, so that is definitely a concern. And then one of the pieces of information in the packet was, or I guess two things were, one was a letter from CPC chair saying that the CPC would be willing to pay for his traffic study, but then there was a message from Metro West saying they may or may not be able to use a traffic study that we would do if we were to do it relatively soon. It sounds like they have a certain order that they do things in. So that makes it even more complicated as far as the traffic study goes, but just common sense wise, traffic is a huge concern at that spot.
Um, while you were speaking, Kristen Lori Connors, I saw your hand go up. Um, you're, you're welcome to join us anytime, of course, if you have something you you want to add, just yeah, unmute, turn on your camera if you so desire. Let us know what's on your mind. Uh, Lori Connors is town planner, for those watching at home.
Hi, I've been having a lot of trouble with connections, so I keep um, freezing and then getting kicked off. So I apologize if that happens during this uh, minute that I'd like to speak. Um, of course, I have attended many of the White Cliffs reuse committee meetings over the, the last year. And um, I can say that a big part of the concern is that there would be no proposals coming forward. Um, because of the state of the building, there was concern that nobody would be interested in the building. So on purpose, uh, the, the RFP was made as broad as possible and the net was cast uh, in an attempt to recruit anybody who might be interested in the building. And we were told by our consultants, Kirk and company that it was unlikely if, if the major goal was to preserve the historic attributes of the building, then it was unlikely that we were going to be able to find anybody who was going to be able to afford to pay Then it was unlikely that we were going to be able to find anybody who was going to be able to afford to pay. The town money for the building, just because it's such a heavy lift. So I I just wanted to be clear that I don't think that there was any intent on the part of. The White Cliffs reuse committee to shut the public out. The concern was just that, well, let's see if we can find anybody who would be interested in this building. And let's, let's see what we get. And we got the three proposals. Two of them, as was previously discussed, were not really responsive. To the RFP, so we only got one good one.
Thanks, Lori. Appreciate the clarification on that. If the board would like, I think our three members that are participating have all issued some some opinions. I haven't spoken yet. If it's all right with the rest of the board, I have. I apologize if this is a very lengthy list of notes that I've that I've prepared for here. I'll start by saying, you know, as as we've spoken about earlier, town meeting voted to save White Cliffs. That was in two thousand sixteen. So we as a board have to respond to that. We have to respect that and we have to do everything we can to save White Cliffs. A lot of people have have more in the emails that we've received. Than tonight, spoken sometimes in opposition to affordable housing or low income housing. I want to say a few things about that. North Grove is becoming too expensive for many in our community. Senior citizens, teachers, young adults entering the workforce. We are less of a community if we are exclusive of anyone who wants to live here. Low income housing is something that North Borough needs more of. We've invested already a lot of public funds from the CPC into housing in the past, and I hope we'll continue to do so. Last year, the board supported spending over a million dollars is a little bit more than a year ago. A little bit more than a million dollars in CPC funds for an eight unit senior low income apartment building. And I was looking forward to that going to town meeting. Unfortunately, the state withdrew their funding at the time. Due to cost escalation of construction and they needed to use that money for other projects that were already underway. This is different than the low income housing projects that the town has supported in the past. In that it is through a a brand new to us outside organization rather than constructed either by the town or North Borough Housing. Which is closely associated with the town. So that is a considerable difference. In meeting and discussing with this developer, both at our meetings and at the open house, I am convinced the developer can do this. That if this board and town meeting chose to do so, I I think they would do what they say. They've done similar projects, not with housing, but meaning well, not with, starting with an original mansion, but but other historic buildings. And I'm very impressed by their mission and their experience. For those concerned about the two point four million that the town has already spent. On this project and in addition to the eight hundred thousand dollars that the developers requesting, certainly with the two point four million dollars. In all likelihood, the town will never see that back through any project that does save White Cliffs. Due to the condition of the building under which we we took it. And the work that's required and the extensive work that is required under any project. That maintains the historic aspect of the building, which would be required by deed. That's going to be very, very expensive. Anyone looking to build a simple for profit business could build. The same square footage for a lot less money someplace else. That I I think the only way that we would ever see that two point four million dollars back is by selling the property to a developer. Who would tear down the building and build something else. And I'm not advocating for that because town meeting said, save it. So we should save it. We might never find a use of that building that gives us the kind of public access that we're looking for. And that the public is looking for. You know, the the interesting aspect of it is that the public never had unfettered access to the building in the past, either when it was. You know, a function hall or a certainly not a private residence. That is something I do like about this proposal is that the public would have, we still need to negotiate the details. But, you know, they they've said basically that public would have access similar to. The way the public has access to reserving rooms at the library for for meetings and things like that. And I I think that part of it is good. The new building that's being proposed is much, much larger than the mansion. And the mansion will no longer with this project be the anchor of the site that we all want it to be. And that's a real concern for me. The location is a real challenge. It's been brought up by a few residents tonight and a couple of members of the board. We absolutely need a traffic study to do this. A traffic study, I mean, would be required by the zoning board through that process. But it really needs to be done before town meeting. At our last meeting, I asked the developer if they'd be willing to. To partner with us and work with us in doing a traffic study before town meeting, if this went forward after tonight. They thought about it and unfortunately their answer was no, that they would, they would not participate in that. They would allow us to do a traffic study totally on our own, which of course they would have no way to stop anyway, because it's still our property. If in the end that the traffic study was essentially a hundred percent usable by their project. They would, they would take it and they would credit us the amount of money that we spent on it. That's, we we need their full cooperation to do a traffic study at any stage. And I I appreciate their position that they haven't done some of the work. And they'll be busy, very busy getting ready for town meeting and other architectural things that they'll be working on. But ultimately, that's a, that's a real problem for me and I think a problem for town meeting. I wish we had more time, but we don't. You know, we're we're here tonight, making a decision tonight, because this is the last time that we can make a decision in order to. Fulfill the developer's timeline. The developer is funding this primarily with grants. Many of those grants have application deadlines that are only one time a year. And they said, you know, no, no later than the end of May, would we be able to make a decision? And also no later than September for a special town meeting in order to make those grant timelines. So I absolutely appreciate the those calling in that say, you know, what's your plan B? What what would you want to do next? One, we really, we can't do another RFP while this is open. So we can't talk to anybody else. We spoke about that earlier. We can't even talk in-house at the length that we would like to, because we need to make a decision tonight. And that's a difficult position to be in, but it's where we are. As we spoke about a little bit last meeting and and also a little bit tonight, there's the MBTA zoning issue. Which for those watching at home will require us to zone for an additional seven hundred and fifty apartments. Over at least fifty acres in the town of North Borough, I think over the next year or so. And I think this would, if we went forward with this project, we should make it part of that. To address at least, you know, the the fifty two units that are provided there. As I mentioned at the last meeting, I am uncomfortable with any board other than town meeting changing the use of a site. So this is currently zone for business in the front, single family residents in back. We would be using it in that case, all for high density residents, which is not currently zoned for. They're allowed to do that under the forty B process. I am not a big fan of that process for that reason. That town meeting doesn't get a say. And so I would only be supportive of this project if it if it also had a companion article. And one of the contingencies within the offer to purchase was was a. Companion zoning article to zone it for, what I think is seven and a half or eight units per acre on the roughly seven and a half to eight acres. That is the White Cliffs property. And that would require a two, two thirds majority vote at town meeting, which is a pretty high threshold. But as I said, I think that's for for my my satisfaction of going forward with this, that's required. If we say yes tonight, based on the input that we've received, I think it's highly unlikely. That town meeting would approve it. And there's no way to predict that. That's just a. A gut feeling and not much more than that. Certainly, we we've received. I I did not count the number of emails. It's not a, you know, the the input to this board is not a vote, but it's a, it's a sense of the community. And certainly the vast majority of the input that we've received. By by email in advance of the meeting tonight, as well as most of the callers tonight, we're we're not in favor of this. I think a lot of that is due to the way that the process started in two thousand sixteen and seventeen. When the town approved and then took the property. That, as was talked about a number of times already, the public wasn't involved in this. I think the public expects, expected to be asked, gee, we own this building now. What do you want to do with it? And the public was not asked that question. Those of the few of us that are intimately involved in town government as it is. Kind of was aware of at least some extent of what was happening. There was a committee formed and they were doing some work. Most regular people, we're we're the weird ones. So most people aren't paying that much attention. And it is our job, and I firmly believe it is our job, to do the outreach to. To to talk to the regular folks in town who ultimately we are responsible for. And I don't think that was done well. And I I don't fault any individual or any any group for that. You know, whether it was sort of the way things were done back then versus how we've learned to do things now, I'm not sure. You know, no member of the select board was a select board in two thousand sixteen. It it just is, it just is what it is. I want to be very careful to say I really do appreciate the hard work that people did. And just just figuring out how to save White Cliffs in two thousand sixteen was admirable. And the amount of effort that it took them to get all the people to town meeting to do that is incredible. And the amount of work that I know the White Cliffs Committee did in bringing in architects and experts. To learn about the condition and the history of the building and prepare it for the RFP was great. But somehow the the step of involving the public was missed. I I think that it is possible that if the public had been involved early on. And and the town at that point was able to convey the complexities of, you know, this might cost eight to ten million dollars. To just fix the whole thing up if that's what the town wanted to do. Maybe the town wants to do that. I I don't know. Maybe once the town heard that and believed it, maybe they would say, you know, all right, I guess apartments aren't so bad. I don't know. I don't know. But but that step was missed. So so that's just kind of where we are. If we say no tonight. We're we're not starting over from two thousand sixteen and seventeen. I I look at, we're starting over from probably last September. That everything the town learned through the process up until the point of issuing the RFP. We know, we have, we have in writing, we have that expert information. And that can be used going forward. That doesn't make it easy. That doesn't mean that there's a guaranteed solution. I I, you know, I don't know what that will be, but we have to engage the public immediately. If that's the route that it takes, either by this board declining to move it forward or by town meeting declining to approve the required articles. And so, you know, saying saying no tonight presents a big unknown as a couple of callers have have mentioned. And that's, but but it's where we are. You know, ultimately, I think the the location of the project is questionable. The amount of work that staff and townspeople would have to do to bring it from this evening to town meeting is a lot. And I I just can't see how it would possibly pass. So, you know, ultimately, I I don't think we should go forward with it. And I I am sad in seeing that, because I know how hard a lot of people worked on this. It's not an awful project. It's a, it's a gray area for me. I think if the developer had committed to to doing the traffic study cooperatively with us. And done a, done a few other things of engaging the public even more, you know, it's it's possible. I I could have come to a different conclusion. But that's for now, that's where I am. And thank everyone for listening to me for probably what was about ten, fifteen minutes of talking, but I said I had a lot written down. Any other questions or, Kristen?
I would love to know if Julianne has any last comments, because she was actually on the White Cliffs Committee.
So I think, I think Mitch has actually encapsulated the the biggest issue. For, in my opinion, is that the the committee did do a lot of work. We were guided by professionals, but all along. We didn't engage, we didn't engage the public. And we missed a whole disconnect with when people said that they were going to pay this money to save the building. I think everyone thought that there would be some community use of some sort that that their money would buy. And and there just seemed to be a a disconnect. And and I, I would also say that along the way. We, you know, we did it very methodically, step by step, but there was, there wasn't a lot of. Well, how about this? Or, you know. Let's, let's, let's also discuss using it as a municipal building. It to Mitch's point, it was. You know, a small group of people said, well, that's too expensive. And and then the the discussion ended, but I have to agree with Mitch. Let the town decide it. They're the taxpayers. So that's. That's just my opinion.
Thank you.
Any other comments or questions from the board?
So to another point, I'd just like to say that there's, someone made a very good point. That the building is falling into disrepair. And I'd just like to remind this board that we have. A substantial amount of money in ARPA. And if if need be, we can probably invest a little to stabilize the building. And, you know, my last comment is going to be that if we vote tonight to bring this to town meeting. There is no way between now and town meeting that anybody could feasibly or even probably legally. Come up with a plan B. And that would be unfair to the voters at at town meeting, because that will be a question. And it's a legitimate question. But you you know, White Cliffs Committee had six, six years. And to say to the town now, come up with plan B in a couple of months. I, I, I just don't think that that's a viable plan.
Thanks, Julianne. I'll, I'll add that. Certainly see the way that consensus is building on the board. You know, I think we all recognize, and I hope the public recognizes that. You know, if we say no to this proposal, we have a lot of work before us. That, as I said, town meeting has said, save it. We need to save it. We don't know because of the timeline. We we can't look into other projects right now, today. It's, you know, we we are taking a risk. That we are, we're trading one possible outcome that we at least have defined. Again, one that I I don't think town meeting will support, but that's not what we're voting on tonight. For for an unknown. And I think there is a chance we can do better. Than this project. We might do worse. We might come back with a project and it's housing again. We might come back to with a project that's ten million dollars and we bring it to town meeting and the voters say no. Something could happen and it could be even a, even a, even a worse outcome for the building. It's hard to know. I I will say regarding the condition of the building, I was in the building with a tour with our two new board members a few days ago. I continue to think that it it is in much better condition inside than it would appear from the outside from the road. It obviously needs some work. But it's a beautiful, beautiful building on the inside. It really, really is. There are a lot of pictures of it on the town website and probably on social media and everything else, if anyone is curious. From the outside, just because it need desperately, it's a really bad paint job. From the outside, just because it need desperately, it's a really bad paint job. It looks like it's crumbling. It's not. It's the bones are in great shape. The inside is is beautiful. And I can see a a a just a fantastic outcome of this at some point. What what will be? We don't know today. And I I hope if the board goes the way that it's looking tonight, that we. We double down, starting our next meeting, figure out figuring out a path forward. And work at it really, really hard. We will have to invest some additional town funds to. Just to ensure the building. I I think, you know, the the White Cliffs Committee, because the process, whether it be due to COVID or anything else, took. Took about three years longer than was originally anticipated. The budget. You know, was was anticipated to hold it through now, just, you know, and it would be sold off by now. There's not much money left, even if this project that is before us tonight went forward, we would need to fund more for. Electricity and insurance and everything else, because this developer isn't going to be ready to start for a couple of years. We probably have three to six months left in the budget of the things that need to be be doing just to keep the building as is, so. You know, we will need to, whether it be ARPA or something else, you know, have that discussion in any case in the next couple of months. There is one hand up in the audience. I I did close public comment. I I think the board is is reaching a conclusion. My my preference is is to just. Take a vote unless board members have anything else additional that we wanted to ask or state before we did so. I don't see anything else. I will say something about the motion before it is read, that. What we tried to do here was present a motion in the positive, so the the motion that I I think Julianne. Will be reading in a minute is a motion to basically approve this, and then we will vote yes or no on that. It would take three yeses to move it forward. A if there are either three, three noes or two noes and two yeses, so that it's a tie, it does not move forward. So folks watching at home, just just to understand that that technical process as to how that works. Any other comments or questions, any anything else that any staff member wanted to add? If not, is there a motion?
Mister Chairman, I move the board vote to authorize the interim town administrator. To begin negotiations on behalf of the board with Metro West Collaborative Development. Relative to the terms of an agreement for an option to purchase the White Cliffs property. With any agreement being subject to approval of the select board. And that the town administrator report on the status of the negotiations at the board's next regular meeting. For the purpose of the board making a determination on formal selection. Of Metro West Collaborative Development as the redeveloped for the White Cliffs property.
Okay, we have a motion. We have a second motion made by Julianne, seconded by Kristen. Any other discussion? All those in favor or opposed? Julianne?
No.
Kristen?
No.
Laura?
No, sorry.
I also vote no. Motion does not pass. That's a unanimous vote. So that that concludes the item. I will schedule an agenda item for our next meeting to. To begin discussions on how to move this forward. And and I hope we can, we can find a way. To, as I said, engage the public and and find a find a great way to save this building and. We we start that process next meeting. Thanks, everybody, and thanks, everyone, again, in the public for. For working hard on this and and offering their input. There's, there was no, there was no easy answer tonight, as I think. Everyone saw from from our discussions. Alright, so that concludes that agenda item. Member Lisa Moselli, if you would like to rejoin us, you can do so because we're moving on to the next agenda item. Which is discussing or discussion regarding training opportunities for all select board members. Welcome back, Lisa. Okay, Bob, did you want to tell us a little bit about this?
There was a memo that went out from the Mass Municipal Association about training for new employee, for new selectmen. And I believe that Lisa intends to go Laura's working. But beyond that, what I was thinking and I think would be an opportunity for the board. With two new members, others perhaps relatively new. Is to have a facilitator come in and do what's known as board training. I think that this is quite common. With boards, even boards that aren't particularly new. Being a selectman is quite complicated, certainly more complicated than people on the outside appreciate. There's an awful lot to learn. Sometimes you have to go through the entire cycle a year or even two to understand how everything fits together. And quite frankly, also, I think that with the new town administrator who might participate in this. It would be good to understand everybody's roles with the particular charter that Northborough has. I think this was, I don't want to steal any Mitch's thunder about the screening committee, but this was brought up. At the screening committee meeting by MRI, both Bob and Buzz from MRI mentioning how. Northborough has a particularly strong charter, which is. In their opinion and also in my opinion, very attractive as far as your recruitment process goes. But that can cut both ways, you know, and I think that it's beneficial. And helps to define roles, which is appealing to a an applicant for the position in a town administrator, but yet. Can make things kind of complicated and and very definitive as far as what the. Particular roles are, what the relationship is with the town administrator and department and. Selectmen and with selectmen and department heads. I will get a little more information on this. I have been in contact with a few people who do this type of thing. But basically, this and one other thing I'm going to mention is going to help tee things up for the next town administrator who. I would imagine would participate in this, be available for this and and be able to take advantage of this. The other thing that I was going to mention is something that was left in the transition memo. By John Codere and the more I time I spend here, I think it would be very, very useful. He recommended the use of ARPA funds for a. Staffing study. I think that a couple of departments come to mind. Where this needs to be looked at, it might be time overall for something like this to be done. I think that there are certainly staffing needs here. I know I've told the the board that I've been impressed with the people in this building. Not just the quality of the department heads, but how well they work together and how. Highly they think of one another, and I think that something like that is gold because I've been in towns where that certainly wasn't the case. I think it's something that you want to preserve, but also I think that some of these department heads do need some additional assistance. And a staffing study like that would be very beneficial. I think that probably would be in the neighborhood, depending on how thorough it was going to be, probably in the neighborhood of eight to fifteen thousand dollars. It would come out of Harper money, but I I think considering the personnel that you have here in particular. It would be money well spent, and also that would be something I believe that the new town administrator would help shepherd through. And I'm sort of teeing it up for the next person, broaching the subject now, can answer any questions on this, but. Where both of these would require some funding, particularly with the board training would require time and buy-in by the board. I just wanted to get an early start on both of these.
Bob, thank you very much. I I, you know, just quickly speaking for myself, I'm very much in favor of of both of those. The staffing study this board has talked about a little bit, I think, last summer. We talked about it briefly and it it seemed like a good idea then, certainly with the change in administration and making sure that we want to round out. You know, what whatever the the skill set is of whoever that new administrator might be and. Beef up the staff a little bit or shift shift things around a little bit. Makes some sense and board training, I think is good. I think it's good for every board to do every once in a while, experienced members, not experienced members. I think that's great. It, you know, would be a great opportunity for us, you know, if this takes place after we hire the new administrator. It's a great opportunity for us to to bond with that individual and and. You know, improve our own skill sets and and understand the ins and outs of some of the things that might not be as obvious and, you know, whether we've, you know. Been on this board or other boards or or brand new, the whole thing, I think we'd all benefit. Laura?
But question, if we do go forward with the staffing study, would that be done by the board, by the select board overseen by the select board and. Would it come back to us or are there other committees that would be involved?
A good question. I think it would certainly involve the selectmen, but I think it would primarily be handled by staff. I think it would be handled by. The new town administrator, Becca, would be taking the lead on that, but the results would come back to the board of selectmen. Certainly for implementation and if it involves new positions, they would have to go to town meeting, I imagine, to be. Added to the personnel plan and to be funded.
But it wouldn't go through other committees? It would just be staff run and board, select board run?
No, I think you would bring in a professional to handle it.
Correct, sorry, yeah. Got it. Thank you. Sorry.
Any other questions, comments? Julianne?
So if we, I I I could, I would love to have a training session. But I would also love to be able to have a retreat for us because I think we need to. As a group, discuss our goals, our personal goals, our, you know, our goals for the. For the board as a whole and just be able to. You know, get to know each other better, what are our priorities and. I think, I think other towns have been able to to do retreats. I don't know if. The public can come and listen, that's fine with me, but just to have a more working session of kind of a free for. Free for all conversation that isn't, you know, an official meeting. So that I'm just want to put in my two cents for that.
If I could, I, yeah, I think anything of that nature is helpful. But I'm sure you're aware, I mean, as far as public involvement, if it was a quorum of the board, I don't see how it could be an executive session. I think it would have to be an open posted meeting wherever it was held.
So so what would that mean? That that anybody could come in and. Li- listen and observe? That's, that's fine with me.
Record, et cetera. It would be, it would be a meeting.
But it would be a more casual, yeah, okay.
Yeah, I mean, we we could schedule anything like that anytime, you know, it could be in person, something like that might be better off in person. Yeah. But in it, and it could, you know, we do, wouldn't even necessarily have to have a formal structured agenda, but would have to have a posted agenda. You know, we would, in that situation, commit to making no decisions because there wouldn't be any action items on the agenda. But talk about, we could call it, you know, fiscal year twenty twenty four planning, whatever we wanted to call it. And and just discuss our our goals and everything like that, but it would be, it would absolutely, if we're talking about things. Relative to to decisions that we could eventually make, it would absolutely be a public meeting. Kristen?
Could we do that? I feel like we talked about this a little bit last year and. We talked about maybe doing it exactly the way you two were just saying. Except there would be no public comment, like people could listen, but they wouldn't be, there wouldn't be a public comment. Item for people to.
I I think, yeah, we can, we can structure, this would clearly be a special purpose meeting, not a general meeting. And for for special meetings, we don't always have public comment as an item. Tend to think it would be better to, you know, ma- make it as public as possible and. Anticipate public comment afterwards if we didn't allow it during, but it, that that makes sense that this would be, you know. Primarily a purpose for discussions among ourselves with, whether it be, if we do it soon, it's with Bob or if we do it a little bit later with. You know, the new administrator once hired.
Right, like I just meant, not that I don't want to hear, I generally get really good ideas from residents, but. Just the idea of the flow of the meeting being a conversation with the five of us in person and then maybe comments at the end would be.
Yeah, we can, we can figure that out. Laura?
I love this idea too, and I definitely would prefer to have it in person to see all of you in real life, but I I do like this idea.
I'm going to throw in a a side comment that some people watching at home have asked us, when can you meet in person? When can you meet in person? Hopefully, we are are driving towards having a hybrid setup at town hall, so our regular meetings would be. Combination of in-person and remote, which the hybrid would offer. So it's, you know, at least from my own perspective. I want us to continue to have our regular business meetings remote this way so that the public can fully participate. But as soon as we have the the technical setup to allow that, that's a little, a little off topic, but ancillary to what was brought up tonight. Hopefully soon. I know the cable office is working on it. So I I think next steps, Bob, is if you want to, would we be able to to. Ask you to look for some people to do these things and, you know, maybe allocate the funds at a future meeting? Or do you think we should wait until we have somebody in place to start the process?
Well, I can get more information. I can get, you know, names of people who do this. I do know someone was recommended to me, but I. Think he's in Europe for a while, unfortunately, but I can get a little more information for the board on exactly what the the services would be. What what can be accomplished and as far as the funding goes, I think that that can, that can wait for a future date.
I also want to add in that I wasn't excluding Becca in the, in these conversations. Becca is a very important part of this team. And so we're talking about Bob, we're talking about future town administrator. I hope and expect that Becca will be intimately involved in all of these conversations. Becca has been, for reasons that we know, particularly quiet tonight and. That's prob- probably why I didn't think about it, but, you know, we hope that you're involved in all these processes as well. Okay, any other questions or comments on the discussion regarding training opportunities for board members? Okay, next up on our agenda is a town administrator screening committee update. So I'm the the representative from the select board on the screening committee, so a couple of things that are going on with us. We've had a couple of meetings thus far. We received some some really good information from Bob and Buzz from MRI. That we've received twenty seven candidates by the response date of May eighth. Majority are from Massachusetts, seventeen of them, and a number of other states are represented. And it's not uncommon to receive candidates from other states. They may have Massachusetts experience or maybe they grew up here, something like that. The committee nor myself have seen the names, so we we don't know who those are. The the current process is that the. We have finalized some questions that they recommended, the consultants recommended that we ask some essay questions of the candidates. So the board finalized a set of three questions that particularly pertain to issues in Northborough. And they are now with those candidates. I forget what the deadline is for for getting those back, but it's sometime in the in the pretty near future. And then the committee will will meet in executive session, which is required when screening candidates for a position. Will review the answers to the essays and we will determine. Probably on the order of six or so candidates to interview. We will then interview them towards the middle or end of June. We will then select probably about three candidates to to move forward. To this board, to the select board for final interviews. It is once that process occurs, when the the final candidates are named, that they become public. And that's just required under the open meeting law because many of those candidates probably have existing jobs and their employers might not know they're looking. So that's, as I said, a normal part of the process and the goal is, at this point, probably the first or second week of July. That we, the select board, would interview the final candidates and and hopefully make a decision at that point. As to whether, when the new person would start, all depends on how much notice they need to give their current employer. You know, it could be anywhere from, you know, a week to three months, probably in that range somewhere, but we don't know yet. Are there any questions that I can answer? From the board or from anybody else about the the current process? I think it's going very well. We we really like the folks that we hired. They're doing a great job. They did an amazing job, as I think all of us know, of interviewing all of us and members of the public. And gathering together sort of the state of the ideal candidate. And that was something that they did issue publicly as well as to the candidates that they were reaching out to. That was encapsulated based upon that input, so they they know the type of. Um, that was encapsulated based upon that input, so they, they know the type of candidate we're looking for. And that helped them identify um, uh, folks that, that they suggested apply. Any other questions on that item? Okay, um, next up, we have reports. Let's see, let's start with our, our old members, returning members. Um, Julianne, do you have any reports tonight?
Uh, just a few things, thank you, Mr. Chairman. Um, the one thing I'd like to is remind everyone of Culture Fest, which will be coming Saturday, June tenth, from eleven to three thirty. So please come for lunch or entertainment or enjoying the various booths that they are going to offer. Um, secondly, I attended the community meeting for the downtown revitalization. And thank you, everyone who came, and thank you for all of your great ideas. The consultants are, are working with those to um, come up with more final proposals. And there will be a third meeting sometime, I, I think they're talking June, but don't quote me on that. Um, and then, uh, I just have a request for an agenda item uh, for a future meeting. I recall that a few months ago, the DPW director and facilities manager mentioned that they would like to have a comprehensive sort of in-depth evaluation of our municipal buildings. And I, I think the plan is that it would go to next year's town meeting, um, and they'd ask for the funding. I was wondering if um, we could have a discussion about using ARPA funds for that, to get that going a little more quickly. Since we have whole, a few buildings that um, will be in play for various uses. So that, that ends my report.
Okay, thank you, uh, Julianne. Bob, if you, you could, Lisa, I'll get to you in just a second, I see your hand, don't worry. Um, if you could um, sort of ask Scott Sharpton here um, about that study. I, I know it's been mentioned, I don't know the status of it or, or anything like that, uh, just make sure he's aware of the discussion tonight, thanks Bob.
Okay.
Lisa, do you have something and you, just as follow-up to Julianne's report?
No, I was gonna ask you if we have, we have bypassed the interview subcommittee recommendations for reports.
Did I, you're right, that is. I apologize, we went over the training and I jumped right to the screening committee update. All right, we will go back to that after reports, thank you very much for catching me on that, Lisa, keep me honest. Okay, uh, all right, Julianne, uh, Kristen, reports tonight?
Yes, um, I do have a report, a short one. I just wanna congratulate and welcome our two new select board members, Laura Zaitin and Lisa Misselli. Um, now that we are four women and one man, um, should we get matching jackets? Just kidding, um. Uh, I did wanna add, cuz I, I know this was a concern to Mitch. Um, to anyone who's, who's listening, who might think it's a little strange. He thought the optics of having the one man be the chair might be a little strange, but I just want everyone to know. That um, in my opinion anyway, and I think uh, Julianne agrees with me. That we um, wanted him to be chair again this year. Because he is really, really good at it and he really loves it. And it takes a lot of extra time to be the chair, I don't think people realize that until they've been on the board for a while. Um, how much extra work the chair does. Um, and especially right now, when we are looking for a new town administrator. Um, not only is he doing extra work for that, but he's also, I think it's good to have some consistency. For um, for some areas of what we do here. So I think for a lot of reasons, it made a lot of sense to keep Mitch as the chair. So I'm not worried about optics, um. I also wanted to ask you, Mitch, if um, when will the um, the traffic and safety committee results be presented? You know how we have that ad hoc committee, can you tell everyone?
So, so that, that committee's work has concluded. Um, and uh, so there is a recommendation from that board to form a permanent traffic safety committee. Um, so I, I imagine that will come forward to either the next meeting or the meeting afterwards to do that. Yeah, I didn't wanna schedule it tonight because one, it was the first meeting after the election and two, I knew we had a lot to talk about this evening.
We did, okay, thank you. Um, and then I don't have, I couldn't find the right poem for tonight. So I wrote one and it's not, it's not that great. But I will post it on my Facebook page tomorrow and anyone who isn't on Facebook, who's terribly curious about it, I will email it to them. But I'm not gonna read it, okay, thank you.
Thanks, Kristen. Uh, Lisa, do you have any reports this evening?
Well, I don't know if I would call it reports, but I do have a little to say. Um, as many of you know, I've been a very active citizen in uh, Northborough for twenty years. I started when I was twenty, so that's a joke. And I wanna take the opportunity to thank all the citizens of Northborough for coming out to the polls on May ninth. Uh, their participation and support is appreciated by all the candidates, stay involved. Um, I look forward to fresh faces, filling the many open seats on our boards and committees. Um, in the next, you know, next few months even, if we could get them all filled, it'd be lovely. I know that Scott Rogers used to say that all the time, so I'll just take that little hit from him. Um, and secondly, I attended the, the MPIC public input session last week at the library. It was very well attended by the public, who had great interest in the progress. And finally, uh, sidewalks, sidewalks and sidewalks. I'm gonna jump on with Kristen about the traffic safety and I'm gonna bring that part of it in there. And um, I've been a strong proponent for safer public ways. And this year, I'm looking forward to seeing a few new sidewalks throughout town. And maybe we can get an update at our next meeting on our Complete Streets program. And um, and thank you for listening.
Putting that onto draft for next meeting to talk about with Bob's, with Bob, uh, Complete Streets. Uh, thank you very much, Lisa. Laura, any reports this evening?
Thank you, I do, first of all, like Lisa said, thank you so much to everybody that came out to vote. I am so grateful to have this seat and to work with you and to represent Northborough. This is something that I've really looked forward to for many years. And I hope that I'll get to continue to work with, with the residents and then help make Northborough a town that we all love to continue to live in. I have a couple of quick updates, um, as far as some events that are coming up. I wanted to thank all of the folks that showed up at the cemetery, oh, Karen Brewster had organized flags on the veterans. Um, uh, so for the veterans at the cemetery in preparation for Memorial Day. The Memorial Day Parade will start at noon at the Civil War Monument next Monday. And then following that, there's gonna be a pig roast at the American Legion, tickets are twenty dollars, you can contact the Legion for information on that. Hopefully, I explained that properly. Um, the other event that's coming up is that the Friends of the Northborough Senior Center will be hosting uh, an event at the Cellar on June twenty-first from four to nine PM. And a percentage of the proceeds from the Cellar from those meals is going to be donated back to the Friends of the Senior Center. Uh, please call to make a reservation for that event. Uh, that's all for my report, I'm looking forward to uh, to continuing to work with you, thank you so much.
Thank you very much, Laura, um, I've got a couple of items. Um, I attended a uh, fire department party uh, for the retirement of Mike Godet and Fred Hurst. Um, I think we, you know, we all know, we uh, signed some certificates with them um, prior meeting. And um, it, it was a lot of fun, there were, there were a lot of, a lot of town people there, a lot of former town people there. It was, it was really a, really a great event and uh, and, and celebrated careers of two great individuals. Um, I also wanna thank our town clerk, Andy Dowd, and everybody who voted at the election, it went uh, extremely smoothly. Um, everyone was respective for all the people holding signs and everything like that. And um, and, and uh, so I, I'm very pleased with the process. Um, I attended ribbon cuttings for two businesses over the last couple of weeks. One for Avidia Bank, which had a reopening after a significant renovation, it looks really nice on the inside. And the other for a new restaurant in town, gathered provisions that this board uh, approved the license for back a, a meeting or two ago. Um, uh, really good food there. Um, so one of the duties of the chair are the uh, the liaison appointments. So um, I will be emailing all the board members, the current list of uh, the liaison assignments. And uh, and, and looking for individual feedback, um, you know, everyone just email me individually, not as a board, I think everybody knows that about the open meeting law. Um, and let me know if you have preferences for committees who'd particularly um, like or, or not like. Um, you know, with the two people leaving and two people coming in, it certainly is a lot easier. If we, we um, handle the assignments from the, those that have departed to those who are joining, but whatever it is, it is. Um, and uh, so hopefully, we can get that all sorted out in advance of our next meeting. Um, and um, uh, I know somebody already mentioned the uh, parade. The uh, parade organizers always ask for a volunteer from this board to speak. And uh, Christian Wickstead has very graciously volunteered to be the board speaker um, at the event. Kristen, thank you very much, I look forward uh, to your remarks, and that concludes my report. And now, jumping backwards in our agenda is um, the uh, interview subcommittee recommendations. To appoint Paul Cacciatore to the Parks and Recreation Commission and Jennifer Tolman and Hannah Chen to the Cultural Council. Uh, would anyone like to make a motion on those or have anything else for discussion? Oh, sorry, Kristen.
Um, I just wanted to say that, once again, Julianne and I were presented with three candidates who are, have already gone above and beyond what they would need to do to impress us to be on the committees that they chose. And we're really, really grateful that these three candidates would like to um, volunteer for Northborough.
That's great, that's great to hear, thanks. All right, Julianne, would you like to make a motion?
I would, thank you, Mr. Chairman. I move the board vote to recommend Paul Cacciatore for appointment to the Parks and Recreation Commission. For a two-year term to expire on April thirtieth, twenty twenty-five, as recommended by the Select Board Interview Subcommittee.
Second.
Motion made by Julianne, seconded by Kristen, any other discussion? All those in favor, Julianne?
Aye.
Kristen?
Aye.
Laura?
Aye.
Lisa? I didn't hear your voice, Lisa, I saw your mouth move.
Aye.
There we go, I also vote aye, vote is unanimous in favor, uh, congratulations. Um, is there a motion on the next appointment?
I move the board vote to recommend Jennifer Tolman for appointment to the Cultural Council. For a three-year term to expire on May thirty-first, twenty twenty-six, as recommended by the Select Board Interview Subcommittee.
Second.
Motion made by Kristen, seconded by Julianne, any discussion? All those in favor, Laura?
Aye.
Lisa? Julianne?
Aye.
Kristen?
Aye.
I also vote aye, vote is unanimous in favor, congratulations. Lisa, do you have a motion for us?
Do, I move the board to vote to recommend Hannah Chen, which I'm very happy that Hannah Chen is one of the new faces that we've now got on a, a board or committee, for an appointment to the Cultural Council for a three-year term. To expire on May thirty-first, twenty twenty-six, as recommended by the Select Board Interview Committee.
Second.
Motion made by Lisa, seconded by Julianne. Um, I will add that I'm very happy that we're appointing a couple of additional people to the Cultural Council. Because as some people know, there's a term limit on the Cultural Council, you can only serve six successive years and you need to take a year off. Um, and we need a minimum of five current members at any time to get the state grant that we uh, that we fund most of the Cultural Council activities from. Um, and this uh, stabilizes that committee for the future, that once people need to step down, we will have at least five going forward. So that, that's great, so thank you very much to both of them. Um, again, we have a motion and a second, any other discussion?
I'll just add one, both of these women have already been going to meetings for a long time and were strongly um, recommended by the chair. And uh, and I think that's just so great when people just start going to meetings, anyway.
We've all been meeting groupies at one point or another. Okay, uh, no other discussion, all those in favor, Kristen?
Aye.
Laura?
Aye.
Lisa?
Aye.
Julianne?
Aye.
I also vote aye, vote is unanimous in favor, congratulations, Hannah. All right, back to that, um, is there any other business to come before the board?
Mr. Chair, can I just um, also announce that uh, the Garden Club is having their plant sale June third, Saturday morning, it's a really good plant sale, so hope to see you there.
Ellsworth McAfee as usual? Excellent, thank you. Um. Uh, Laura, did you have anything else?
No.
Okay, um, all right, if nothing else, is there anyone in the audience that wishes to offer public comment before we conclude tonight? Give it a few seconds, I'm not seeing any hands, going once, going twice. Gone, is there a motion to adjourn?
Mr. Chairman, I move that we adjourn tonight's meeting.
Second.
Motion made by Julianne, seconded by Kristen to adjourn, any, oh, no discussion, that's a, a Robert's rules thing, there's no discussion under a motion to adjourn. All those in favor, Julianne?
Aye.
Laura?
Aye.
Kristen?
Aye.
Lisa? I also vote aye, vote unanimous in favor, we are adjourned, nine forty-four PM, thank you very, very much, everybody.
Good night, thank you.
Have a great night, goodbye.